To sign in to speak on matters before, in the land use hearing before we begin. But keep that recording going and we'll let you know when we're starting.
Happy to, sir.
I call the 10-minute rule and get us rolling. Everyone who is in line to sign up, please, please do sign up to speak. I assure you, we want to hear everyone's opinions here today. But if you could turn down the hallway there to your neighbors who have come to speak as well and tell them to please shush and we can get things going to get the show on the road. So, let us come to order. And if everyone will still, if everyone will please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, turning to the county attorney for certification of the agenda.
Yes, sir, the county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda. Appropriate notice has been provided where necessary and otherwise the board has appropriate jurisdiction over all these matters.
Thank you, thank you, counselor. Turning to the commissioners for any disclosures for items on this agenda, commissioners.
I have none, thank you.
And I have none, thank you.
And nor have I. Moving on to our first item in our land use meeting agenda is Perry Park filing number one, Fourteenth Amendment, replat. Project file is SB 2024-024. Brett Thomas, AICP chief planner, and that's actually Brett this time, awesome. Before Brett, I'm gonna have, before you begin, can I have staff clear our first signup sheets and bring them to the chair, please? Just so we can make sure that in case anybody has signed up to speak on this item, I have those ready to go when it comes time for citizen testimony. And Brett, when you are ready, sir, please begin.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Brett Thomas for Planning Services. The item before you is Perry Park filing one, Fourteenth Amendment, project number SB 2024-024. In consideration of everyone's time, I'm gonna provide an abbreviated presentation. The applicant's request an approval of a replat to subdivide lot 18C of Perry Park filing one in order to create two additional lots for a total of three single-family residential lots. The property is outlined in red in his own suburban residential. It is located northwest of the intersection of Perry Park Boulevard and Pike Drive. Property is surrounded by existing single-family residential lots within Perry Park. Six of the abutting lots are between .9 acres and one acre in size, similar to the lot sizes proposed with this replat. The lot to the west is 2.7 acres in size. Lot 18C is currently 2.87 acres in size. Each of the proposed lots are .95 acres in size. Roads and central services are extended to the site. 10-foot utility easements are granted on both sides of the proposed lot lines. Staff has evaluated the replat in accordance with Article VII of the subdivision resolution. Should the board find that the approval standards for the replat are met, following proposed conditions should be considered for inclusion in its motion. Condition number one, prior to plat recordation, the applicant shall pay $1,000 for cash in lieu of school land dedication for the two additional residential lots to the Douglas County School District. Condition number two, prior to plat recordation, the applicant shall pay $500 for cash in lieu of parkland dedication for the two additional residential lots to Douglas County. Condition number three, prior to plat recordation, technical corrections to the replat exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. And condition number four, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public meeting and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for questions regarding staff report. Otherwise, Kevin Archer is available to answer any questions.
All right, thanks so much, Brett. Any questions for Mr. Thomas from the board?
I have none.
I do have a few questions, but I'll reserve those following the applicant's presentation.
Okay, I have no questions for staff at this time. If the applicant would like to come forward and, yeah, Mr. Archer, please do give us your name, your credentials, and who you represent, and, sir, when you're ready.
Kevin Archer, A R C H E R, 105 Wilcox, representing Hank and Tracy Curtis in the project, I'm with Dave Archer and Associates. Brett did a great job helping us through the process, so don't really have anything to add at this point, but we're available to answer any questions you might have, and the applicant does agree to the conditions.
Okay. Questions from the board for applicant?
I have none, thank you.
I just wanted to make sure all of those conditions were accepted. I heard you say that. So, any additional issues or concerns, I guess, from staff on this application? Okay, okay.
They've addressed all the comments.
All the comments, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. And so, this is a question, but it's a jump ball between staff and applicant. I mean, the replating here, that, the replating is still gonna produce properties about the same size as the surrounding properties. Did I hear you say that, Brett, in the staff report?
That's correct, Commissioner. The, as seen on the exhibit here, the existing lot 18C would be split into three lots, just under one acre, so .95, six acres each. The six lots surrounding it to the north, east, and south are between .9 and one acre in size, and then the lot to the west is 2.7 acres. So, it's, it's consistent with the zoning and similar to what's surrounding it.
Okay, and turning back to the applicant, that's what you guys are commending to today?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, that's okay, that sounds okay by me. All right, any further questions for either staff or applicant from the board?
I have none.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Archer. I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor for any, any citizen testimony, excuse me, any resident testimony. Is there anyone who would like to give public testimony at this time on this replat? Seeing none in the room, Troy, do we have anyone online who would like to give remote testimony on this replat?
I have no online comment.
All right, very good, thank you, Troy. All right, bringing back to the board for action, how would the board like to dispose with this replat application?
I have a motion to approve the Perry Park filing one, Fourteenth Amendment replat because it does meet all of the approval criteria with three conditions as presented. Project file SB 2024-024.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion and second. I just need to double-check, Commissioner, I got four conditions. Turning back to staff, how many conditions did we have?
I apologize, I wrote it off the packet last night as three, thank you, four conditions, I'm sorry.
Okay, just for the record, we have correction of motion, second, okay?
Yes, the second is fine.
Okay. Back to the applicant, four conditions, that's your understanding, and you agree to it? All right. All right, so there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and replat is approved. Congratulations to the applicant. Moving on to the, our next land use item, Piney Lake Trails final plat and open space agreement, project file is SB 2022-049. Heather Scott, AICP principal planner, Heather, when you are ready.
Services, the item before you today is Piney Lake Trails final plat and its corresponding open space agreement. The project number is SB 2022-048. Tom Clark, property owner, and Robert Fitch of Rick Engineering are here on behalf of the application. The presentation will cover both the plat and open space agreement and will require two separate board motions. The applicant is requesting a final plat approval of 335-acre parcel into 176 lots, seven tracks, 2.5 miles of regional trails, open space, and associated public roadways. A separate open space agreement with Douglas County is also proposed with this request. The site outlined here in red is zone plan development and located in the far northeast corner of the county. These are the final plat approval standards. Public Works Engineering has approved all required studies, reports, and construction plans for the final plat, and the SIA has been approved. Two motions are necessary from the board, one for the final plat and one for the open space agreement. Staff has evaluated the final plat in accordance with Article V of the subdivision resolution. Should the board find that the approval standards for the final plat are met, the following proposed conditions should be considered for inclusion in this motion. Condition number one, concurrent with recordation of the final plat, the open space agreement between Piney Lake Trails LLC, Piney Lake Trails Metropolitan District, and Douglas County shall be executed and recorded. Condition two, prior to recordation of the final plat, all water and sewer easements required by the city of Aurora and depicted on the final plat shall be recorded by separate instrument. Condition number three, prior to the issuance of each residential building permit for all lots within the final plat, evidence shall be provided to the county that the cash in lieu of school land dedication fees of $1,755.04 per lot has been paid to the Douglas County School District. Condition number four, Colorado Parks and Wildlife literature shall be made available to both prospective homeowners and home buyers regarding the existence of wildlife in the area and how to minimize conflict. Condition number five, during construction activities within the development, the applicant, its successors, and assigns shall take all responsible care to watch for historic resources, paleontological resources, and other cultural history resources, and shall immediately notify Douglas County and complete the appropriate Colorado Office of Archaeology and Historic Preservation data management forms in the event of such discovery. Condition number six, prior to recordation of the final plat, technical corrections to the plat exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. And condition number seven, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representatives during the public hearing and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. For the open space agreement, two conditions are proposed. Condition number one, prior to recordation of the open space agreement, technical corrections to the open space agreement shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. And number two, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public meeting and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. This concludes staff's presentation at this time, and I'm available to answer any questions. Otherwise, the applicant does have a presentation, if so, but they're also here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Heather. Questions for staff from the board?
I have none at this time.
I have none.
Very good. Applicant present, applicant presentation, come on forward.
Good evening, commissioners. Rob Fitch with Rick Engineering Company, F I T C H. On behalf of the owner and the project, we're here to answer any specific questions you might have, and we have a presentation where we can relate to any slides if you choose to do so. Otherwise, we are in agreement with the conditions of approval for the final plat and the open space agreement.
Okay, very good. If you'd like to do your presentation, but I will, I will pull the board. Board, do you have questions for the applicant at this time, or should we proceed to the applicant's presentation?
I'm okay seeing the presentation.
I have no questions, and if you'd like to do an abbreviated one, I would be fine with that, but...
Well, applicant, you're free to make your presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so a little outline of our presentation today, and we're here seeking your final plat approval. As Ms. Scott presented in her presentation, we are in the upper northeast corner of the county with a plan development and preliminary plan approved in late of 2022. A little bit of context to where we're located, we have our sister project that we did a few years ago, Trails, and it was a very similar project and process where we were clustering a number of the single-family lots to the northern portion adjacent to County Line Road and leaving a large amount of open space. So Piney Lake Trails before you today is a very similar model, with 72% of the site dedicated to open space, buffering the communities to the west, south, and east, and aligning our major access points along County Line Road. With the final plat application, we are in compliance with the subdivision regulations, Article V. We are in compliance with the approved plan development and the commitments of such in the preliminary plan, and consistent with the northeast subarea of the comprehensive master plan. Just a little of the technical document, 176 single-family lots, 242 acres of open space. Central water and sewer services are provided by the city of Aurora, and we do have an executed SIA and pending open space agreement. A little depiction more of the open space, we do have a two-and-a-half-mile trail, kind of meandering through the southern portions of the open space with connectivity to the trails to the west that were built with that development. From a traffic standpoint, we do have an approved traffic study on record from Douglas County and the city of Aurora. Our access points, we have two access points adjacent to County Line Road and one off of Piney Lake Road to the west. We do not have any access points off of Delbert Road, but we are dedicating right-of-way to the county for Delbert, Piney Lake Road, and then we're doing access improvements for turn lanes in and out at the access points, and we have a signal contribution to the traffic signal in the northwest corner. Water and sewer services as stated by the city of Aurora, approved service agreement, utility plans, and the easements that are gonna be recorded by separate document. Stormwater and drainage detention been reviewed by the county... Uh, stormwater and drainage detention been reviewed by the county, urban drainage and the city of Aurora, um, and the dry utility, public safety, uh, services are available. A statement of commitments for the Douglas County School District has been referenced, cash in lieu of land dedication and building permit. Little bit of the project schedule, uh, going to complete the subdivision plating, um, hopefully, uh, this year, uh, maybe a start of construction towards the end of this year, early 2025. Home occupancy the following year with a buildout in '27 and '28. Uh, approval criteria before you, um, and as referenced, we do, um, agree with the conditions of approval, um, for the final platte. And we are here respectfully for your approval, and, um, any questions you might have, we're available.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, questions for the applicant from the board?
I have none.
I have none.
I have no real questions. I like the use of open space. I like how you guys clustered it with the, uh, community, uh, which I, I believe you said was your guys' development across County Line Road, uh, kind of, uh, providing that buffer to the, um, to the landowners to the south and west. I like that. I think that's, uh, I like it a lot.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, and you confirmed acceptance of conditions, so the applicant is, uh, is excused from the podium.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to go ahead and open the floor for any, um, uh, citizen testimony on this, both, uh, we're, we're happy to hear both final platte testimony and open space agreement testimony. Is there anyone who will get, to give, uh, public testimony? I am seeing none in the room. Troy, turning to you, is there anyone online who wishes to give remote testimony on this final platte and open space agreement?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment for this item.
All right, thank you. Bringing it back to the board for action. How does the board wish to dispose of these two applications?
Mr. Chair, I'm pleased to make a motion to approve the Piney Lake Trails Final Platte because it does meet all of the approval criteria, uh, listed there with the seven conditions as presented. Project file SB 2022-048.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the, uh, final platte is approved. Is there, uh, any action the board wishes to take on the open space agreement?
I have a motion to approve the Piney Lake Trails Open Space Agreement with the two conditions as presented. Project file SB 2022-048.
And I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the open space agreement is approved. Congratulations to the applicant. Thanks so much, guys. All right, so moving into our public hearing agenda items, our, our first item is, uh, pinery plan development, 31st Amendment, Plan Development Major Amendment, project file is ZR 2023-002, and it looks like we have a request for, uh, continuance. Uh, Mike Pasicka from staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. You are correct. Uh, this request is for project number ZR 2023-002, the pinery plan development, 31st Major PD Amendment, and the request is from the applicant to continue today's public hearing, uh, to the November 19th, 2024 Board of County Commissioners' public hearing at 2:30 PM.
All right, thank you, Mike. Uh, board, we do have a request from the applicant to continue. Of course, we do not, uh, have to, um, to, uh, continue this item. What is the pleasure of the board at this time?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to continue pinery plan development, 31st Amendment, Plan Development Major Amendment, project file ZR 2023-002 to November 19th, 2024 at 2:30 PM.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this plan development. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and it is continued. Okay, our second item is River Canyon Filing 2, Fourth Amendment, Minor Development Platte, project file is SB 2024-019. We do have a request to continue to October 8th. Heather Scott, AICP Principal Planner. Heather, do we have a continuance request?
There is a request for continuance. Actually, as of today, the applicant has asked to continue to November 19th, 2024. I do have their most recent letter for the record.
All right, I will, uh, make note. Thank you, Heather. All right, board, we do have a request to continue, uh, this, uh, Fourth Amendment to a minor development platte. What is the pleasure of the board?
I have a motion to continue River Canyon Filing 2, Fourth Amendment, Minor Development Platte, project file SB 2024-019 until October 8th, 2024 at 2:30 PM.
And I'll second that.
Okay, just, uh, just before, um, recognition, motion and second is recognized, uh, we did have it stated by staff, and actually, we were just provided a, um, a, uh, written request, looks like from the applicant, to, um, uh, to continue to November 19th. Commissioner Thomas?
I'll restate my motion. I have a motion to continue River Canyon Filing 2, Fourth Amendment, Minor Development Platte, project file SB 2024-019 until October 19th, 2024 at 2:30 PM.
And I will second that motion.
I'm so sorry, Commissioners, I do not mean to belabor this. The request, uh, for continuance was November 19th. Um, would we like to correct this final motion?
I'm sorry, November 19th, 2024.
Do you, does the second recognize correction?
We'll get there. Okay, yes, I second that motion.
All right, the chair accepts the motion to continue to November 19th, 2024, uh, and recognizes the motion and the second. Any, uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, continuance to November 19th is granted.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll see if we have any more of those. Uh, next item up is Sundown Preliminary Plan, project file is SB 2019-046. Matt Jablonsky, AICP Chief Planner, and it does appear, Matt, we have another request for continuance.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Matt Jacobowski for staff. That's correct. The Sundown Preliminary Plan has requested continuance to October 8th, 2024 at 2:30 PM.
Excellent, thank you, Matt. Uh, Commissioners, we do have another request to continue this preliminary plan. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to continue Sundown Preliminary Plan, project file SB 2019-04 to October 8th, 2024 at 2:30 PM.
And there is a typo on that motion. I think it's SB 2019-046. And if that is correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so you, uh, motion, uh, makes the correction, second accepts the correction?
I will make that second, yes.
Excellent. Okay, um, we do have a motion and a second. Um, any discussion? All right, um, all in favor, the motion to continue the preliminary plan as read into the record and corrected, say aye.
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 Aye. And, uh, motion, uh, and motion to continue is passed. Thank you all for your patience while we did that. It's, it's legal. We really had to do all those things. All right, our next item is, um, and make sure I got everything. Okay. Think I got everything. Next item up is Oak Bluff Preliminary Plan, project file SB 2019-038. Matt Jacobowski, AICP Chief Planner, presenting for staff. Looks like we do have another request to continue.
Matt Jacobowski for staff, uh, that's correct. The Oak Bluff Preliminary Plan has requested a continuance to October 8th, 2024 at 2:30 PM.
All right, thank you, Matt. Uh, board, how do we wish to, uh, consider this motion to continue?
I have a motion to continue Oak Bluff Preliminary Plan, project file SB 2019-038 until October 8th, 2024 at 2:30 PM.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, uh, to continue this preliminary plan. All in favor, uh, any need for discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And continuance granted. All right. Next item on our public hearing is an adoption of ordinance number O is an Oscar 024-004, an ordinance for the safe use of public property to limit public camping and prohibit temporary structures on public property within Douglas County, Colorado. On second reading, Jeff Garcia, County Attorney, for staff.
Thank you, Commissioners. I've given the presentation on this at the, um, Homeless Initiative in a work session at the first, um, reading. To be thoughtful of the time of the Commissioners and as well as public, I'd like to know if you'd like me to go into the PowerPoint presentation, or if I could just address the two changes to the ordinance.
Uh, how would the board like to, uh, address the request from the county attorney?
You know, if you can briefly go through the PowerPoint presentation, I would appreciate that, Mr. Chair.
Let's go for it.
So the, the county has adopted a, a restriction on camping in public places last June, and since then, we have had, um, some changes in the law. Most importantly, the change from the US Supreme Court's decision in the city of Grant Pass versus Johnson. In that, they made a clarification that it is not a Eighth Amendment violation to ticket or create a penalty for camping in a public, uh, on public property where there is no, uh, shelter available. Prior to that decision, in compliance with the law, the county had required that shelter be available and that it was documented before we could, uh, issue a citation. With that legal change, we have removed the shelter requirement so that no shelter is required for a violation to occur, and clarified the public property, um, element of it to no longer be limited to county property, but to public property as a whole. Ideally, this would help us where our sheriff's department enforces, um, laws in areas that are not expressly owned by the county. And that's the only portion of the presentation I have. It is a very small change, but it is actually, uh, a very important change and reflective of the, um, the law across the United States at this time.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Questions for the county attorney?
I have none.
You know, I, I don't have any questions for you, Jeff, but you have done a phenomenal job as counsel, uh, to this county to ensure we're, uh, abiding by the will of our citizens and ensuring we're reclaiming our public spaces. Uh, you know, as founder and chair of our Douglas County Homeless Initiative, we were really pleased and honored to announce, uh, just a few weeks ago, uh, that Douglas County has officially ended homelessness. And that sounds like, uh, hyperbole, but the reality is based upon our official point in time, we currently have zero encampments, zero panhandling, and only six unsheltered homeless, uh, in a county of 400,000. Uh, when you juxtapose that with, you know, city and county of Denver that has about 700,000 people, uh, an increase in about 31% and 6,500 people now homeless, um, in, in that particular area, it's of great concern to us, and we know that the citizens elected us to address this problem and many others. But it's been really, uh, an honor to work with you on our overarching philosophy, which is the four Cs. Uh, we lead with compassion and always want to focus on the dignity of knowing a person's name and recognizing that if they're in crisis, a hundred percent of the unhoused that find themselves in Douglas County will, uh, have an opportunity to receive services. Uh, and that's primarily due to our, uh, phenomenal HART team, the Homeless Engagement Assistance Resource Team, uh, which has been pure magic. Uh, you know, it's a navigator paired with law enforcement, and it's a free service. Any, any taxpayer in this room can call that number, uh, and if they see someone in crisis, the HART team will go out and address, uh, those needs immediately. And really, I applaud the citizens of this community. You deserve all the credit for this because, um, you heard that call. We had a very active handouts don't help campaign. Not saying don't give. Uh, we're a very generous community, but the encouragement was please don't roll down your window at an intersection and hand money or anything else out of your car door. That's not safe for you, uh, or for the person receiving those funds, but please redirect your generosity to our Douglas County Community Foundation where you know a hundred percent of what you donate goes right to those in need, uh, through food banks, shelter, food, I mean, whatever is, is necessary in that particular moment, our HART team. Um, so thank you to the citizens for, for the incredible work. It has not been easy, uh, but we've seen that move forward. I think the, the camping ban is significant. Um, you know, oftentimes, we've seen cities like Seattle, San Francisco, Portland, struggle and become victims of their own compassion. And despite our willingness to help, it seems as though that model is severely broken. Um, we are dealing with a homeless industrial complex, particularly in Denver, that's receiving about $115 million per year, only to see their homeless population go up 31%. Um, you know, we were recently asked how much we're spending of the taxpayers' dollars, and it's virtually nothing. We just piloted this program with ARPA funding, uh, which was American Rescue Plan Act funds, and then we received grants from the state because it was working. So, you know, thankfully, our numbers were never astronomical, so we were able to nip this in the bud. Um, but it's not, it's a complex issue, but it's not that complicated, uh, when you have the will of the people behind you, uh, to solve a really significant problem. And I think we're going to continue to work hard. We've just, uh, adjusted our teams from three to five, so we now have five HART teams. Uh, and again, my encouragement is if anyone sees anybody in crisis, please call that number and donate to the community foundation, um, if you are able to do that. But the camping ban, um, is all about reclaiming our public spaces. And Douglas County is a place where quality of life comes first, and we know our citizens expect a clean and safe environment. That's frankly why we have what we have. Everybody's like, why do you have so much money in Douglas County? Well, it's safe and clean, so businesses want to be here. You all wanted to have your homes here, and so you're paying property taxes to us. We get sales tax revenue for that, and that all comes, you know, in, in many regards, back to the county. Now, this board has been great about returning about $38 million this last year to citizens, uh, because property taxes were way too high. We don't need more of the citizens' money. We could frankly do with less, um, and that's our philosophy. But, um, you know, it all is hand in hand. When we have a safe and clean community, uh, we all benefit. So we are reclaiming our public spaces and also providing services to those who need it. So I, I just want to applaud your efforts, Jeff, and the work of the Homeless Initiative to advance this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You bet. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
Thank you for bringing this forward, Jeff. I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
I have no questions for the county attorney because this is something we've talked about a great deal. So thank you very much. Uh, yeah, thanks, Jeff. Thanks for working on this. Um, I, I definitely appreciate it. Um, okay, so, uh, just to let everybody know, and, uh, anybody who wishes to make public testimony on this ordinance, uh, that time is now. Um, in the state of Colorado, uh, resolutions can be passed with a single, um, uh, vote, uh, whereas ordinances require two votes. That's why we call it the second reading. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and give public testimony on this ordinance? Seeing none in the room. Uh, Troy, do we have anybody online who would like to give remote testimony on this ordinance?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Very good. Bringing it back to the board for action. Board, how would we like to dispose of this second reading on this ordinance?
Mr. Chair, if it pleases the board, uh, I'd be honored to make a motion to approve an adoption of ordinance number O dash 024 dash 004, an ordinance for the safe use of public property to limit public camping and prohibit temporary structures on public property within Douglas County, Colorado, on second reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Um, uh, as a point of discussion, I'm going to, uh, definitely speak in favor of the motion. I think this was the right thing for us to do. Initially, we were hamstrung, as you saw in the attorneys, uh, in the county attorney's presentation. Uh, without that Supreme Court decision, um, you know, we're making a change to, in my opinion, make it better and give us these tools to properly control, you know, the, the problems associated with, uh, the homeless crisis here in the county. I think this is the right thing to do. I really appreciate the county attorney for putting the work in on it, but more specifically, Commissioner Layden, once again, I have to recognize your leadership on this topic. Commissioner Layden, once again, I have to recognize your leadership on this topic. This is something that you, I didn't even want to touch this thing when Commissioner Layden first brought it up. I thought he was crazy to even try to fix this huge problem that was everywhere in our country, and yet, Commissioner, you found a way forward. You found us a couple of really practical solutions. You brought them before the board. Okay, not everything. There are a couple of things that didn't make the final cut, but as you said, we, thanks to your efforts, we can all take credit for great work to get our arms around this persistent problem through the entire country, even worse up in the Denver area, and yet, it's something that we've solved. This is a part of that solution, so I speak in favor of the motion. Any further discussion?
Well, I'll just reiterate that the credit goes to the citizens and to you. You know, the reality is that it takes at least one additional vote to advance these important measures, and one commissioner alone up here can't do anything. So, always appreciate the support of this board, and a lot of these good things don't happen unless you're voting alongside them, and you're doing a lot of great work, too. So, thank you for that.
It's okay. I get to live here, too. No problem. All right. Commissioner, any discussion?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance on second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the ordinance is adopted on second reading. All right. Let's go to, I don't know, is anybody here to speak in public comment on Arrowhead, Colorado Metropolitan District Service Plan? All right. Well, luckily for all of you, our next item is the Arrowhead, Colorado Metropolitan District New Service Plan. Project file is SV two zero two four dash zero zero two. D.J. Beckwith, principal planner, presenting for staff. And D.J., when you are ready, please begin.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The project before you is service plan application for Arrowhead, Colorado Metropolitan District. The project number is SV twenty twenty four dash zero zero two. I'm D.J. Beckwith, representing Planning Resources. The applicant representative is Megan Becker. In addition to the staff report, two supplemental memos have been provided to the board of county commissioners. The first includes a revised service plan with changes that address Roxborough Water Sanitation District decision not to consent to overlapping powers with the district. The second memo includes additional public comment received. The applicant has provided revised maps to replace the public infrastructure maps in the service plan. Staff has provided the board with an updated, clean service plan that includes all these The applicant is, application is requested for approval of a service plan application for Arrowhead, Colorado Metropolitan District. The proposed district would include the powers to provide services for water infrastructure, storm sewer, sanitation wastewater infrastructure, streets, street improvements, traffic safety protection, parks and recreation, and covenant enforcement and design. The Board of County Commissioners created and adopted guidelines for processing and reviewing special district service plan applications in compliance with Title 32. The process begins with the submittal of an application. The request is prepared by staff and forwarded to referral agencies for comment. Staff further analyzes the request, and the applicant has the opportunity to resolve any issues identified through the referral period. The request is reviewed by the planning commission at a public meeting. Following public notice, the request is heard before the Board of County Commissioners. At a public meeting on August 19th, 2024, the planning commission recommended denial of the service plan by a vote of five to one. Planning commission questioned the need for new services via district, the timing of the district related to the future land use, and potential for the use of eminent domain. Five planning commissioners noted the request did not meet the board's service plan approval criteria numbers one, two, and nine. Numerous public comments were received, with the majority being in opposition of the proposed district. Staff highlighted three outstanding items had the planning commission recommended approval. First, the applicant shall complete technical changes and corrections to the service plan to the satisfaction of Douglas County staff. Second, the applicant shall address all comments provided by the county's financial consultant. Third, the applicant must request and receive consent to overlapping services from Roxborough Water. The first and second conditions of approval have been met. For the third, Roxborough Water reviewed the issue at its board meeting on September 18th of 2024 and did not approve consent to providing overlapping services. The applicant has provided a revised service plan to address this. The district is surrounded by Arrowhead Golf Course in the Roxborough Separated Urban Area of the 2040 Comprehensive Master Plan. The district is zoned planned development for residential use and outlined in red on the slide above. The project is also the subject of a major planned development amendment, application to allow for open space and club slash resort uses. The applicant is proposing two options for the development of the property depending on if the major PD amendment is approved or not. If the amendment is not approved, the service plan has a residential alternative in which it anticipates to include 31 residential units and zero square feet of commercial space. The projected population for the district at buildout is 93 residents. The major PD amendment, if the major PD amendment is approved to allow club and resort, the primary plan for the district would be to include approximately 30,500 square feet of commercial space. For either the proposed commercial plan or residential plan, district revenues are proposed to be from property taxes. The estimate total mill levy cap is 60 mils. The proposed initial debt service levy is 50 mils, with initial operations and maintenance mill levy of 10 mils. The total authorized debt limit is 8.5 million. The project total cost of improvements for both plans is just over $4 million. The service plan includes language on developer advances but does not give an estimated monetary The project was sent out on referral from July 15th to July 30th. Most responses for referral had no comment. Douglas County planning staff requested technical changes. The applicant addressed this in the revised service plan. All other planning staff comments have been addressed. Douglas County Engineering Services had comments on the service plan, including an underground detention facility, which is not allowed in the county. This issue has been addressed by the applicants. Hilltop Securities commented that the district will be capable of extinguishing all bonds within the parameters of the service plan for both the commercial and residential alternatives. BBC Research and Consulting reviewed the supplemental market feasibility information provided by the applicant and concluded that the district is likely to generate adequate revenue to support the district. Roxborough Water and Sanitation District provided comments related to their requirements for water service. The applicant addressed these comments. During review of the revised service plan, they commented that because the proposed district is within Roxborough Water boundaries, the proposed district is required to receive consent to overlapping services approved by the Roxborough Water Board per Colorado Revised Statute Title 32. The applicant made a request to Roxborough Water for consent to overlapping powers. Roxborough Water considered this at their September 18th board meeting and did not approve to consent of overlapping services to the applicants. The applicants have provided a revised service plan with additional language to address Public comments were received in opposition to the district being approved, sharing concerns with zoned residential area becoming a commercial area, and concerns about giving eminent domain through approving the metro district to a commercial company. Comments were also made about access to the district being on private roads in a gated community, and concerns with plans for streetscaping that fall outside the district. These letters have been provided to the board. Staff's assessment of the proposed amendment as it relates to the criteria has been detailed in the staff report. The Colorado Revised Statute specifies criteria for approval of special district service plans. The board must consider the following nine criteria in evaluating the service plan. In response to number one, the area encompassed by the district's boundaries is zoned planned development, and there is a projected need for the proposed residential use of the district. Should the major PD amendment be approved to allow commercial use, there may be a projected need for the proposed commercial alternative for the district. In response to number two, the existing public service infrastructure within the proposed district boundary area is lacking. Therefore, existing services are inadequate for the projected needs of the service area. Number three, based upon comments from the county's financial consultant, the service plan demonstrates for both the residential and commercial plans, the district can provide these services economically. Number four, based on the comments from the county's financial consultant, the service plan demonstrates for both the residential and commercial plans, the district's revenues, as projected in the financial plan, would be sufficient to discharge the proposed indebtedness. Number five, no entity is able or willing to provide all the services desired within a reasonable time or on a comparable basis. Number six, all facilities will be constructed in accordance with all applicable standards. Number seven, the service area of the district falls within the Roxborough Separated Urban Area of the Comprehensive Master Plan. The Comprehensive Master Plan outlines objectives for these areas that include supporting the logical buildout of separated urban areas and to develop communities with adequate public facilities and services. The proposed development and services of the district support these concepts. Number eight, based upon important, or based upon information provided by the applicant, the district will be in compliance with Clean Water Plan. And in response to number nine, based upon the level of services proposed for the area and lack of service provisions from existing service providers in the area, the district may be in the best interest of the area proposed to be served. The residential or commercial use of the district will be determined by the outcome of the major PD amendment. Should the board find that the application complies with the criteria found in Colorado Revised Statute Title 32, the board may approve. This concludes my presentation. The applicant representative, Megan Becker, is also here to answer any additional questions and will give the applicant's presentation.
All right. Thanks, D.J. Questions for the board for D.J.?
I'm going to reserve my questions following the applicant's presentation.
D.J., a few slides back, there were some referral comments that referred to eminent domain, one forward. Eminent domain power. Can you tell me where in this PD it provides eminent domain power? Or do I, should I get that from the applicant?
So, it would be in a service plan, they'd get that eminent domain through the service plan.
Okay. Thank you.
To continue that line of questioning, they get that because they're a Title 32 district.
Correct.
Which eminent domain is granted to just as it is the county, municipalities, et cetera.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay. So, I noticed in your presentation, you told us how condition three was the water service and how Roxborough Board did not agree to provide water service. Is that why we have a revised service plan before us where it's highlighted that the district shall provide limited water and limited sanitary sewer systems?
Yes, that's correct. They did change their language to comply with what had been decided by the Roxborough Water because they did not consent to overlapping.
Okay. And, and so, the, well, hang on. That next question is best given to the applicant, so I'm going to, I'm going to hold that question until the applicant can present. Any further questions for D.J. or staff from the board?
No.
Okay. The applicant may, does the applicant have a presentation? And they're nodding, so the applicant is welcome to give the presentation at this Do ask that the applicant, as I do notice a number of folks ready to speak, it seems. Once you, when it's your turn to speak, you guys run that, that's your presentation. Please do give us your name, tell us where you're from, who you're, well, the nature of your representation of the applicant. Okay? Marcus, you are no stranger to the board, but that counts for you, too. Your name and your credentials, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Thank you very much for this opportunity to address you. My name is Marcus Pacner, last name spelled P-A-C-H-N-E-R. I am a land use and community outreach consultant to the team here. Thank you very much for this opportunity to address it. We certainly will address the two questions that have been brought up already as well. I do want to say that we are here today to present on the service plan for the Arrowhead, Colorado Metropolitan District. You will hear from three of our team members in our initial presentation. I'll stay here just to facilitate a faster presentation. Palmeroy Lodging is our client, the applicant on the site. You will also hear from Megan Becker on the application. Kim Lee Horn, Brownstein, 4240, is the architect on this site as well in the background. So, just going through, those are the team members. Next slide, please. Commissioners and Mr. Chair, we are going to go through this agenda. We will do the introductions that we have covered. Provide the first, the second, third, and fourth items are really just a little bit of background to really understand the comments that you will hear from public comment and why that is necessary. We'll quickly transition to the metro district, what is before you, talk about metro district benefits and requirements, the need for this, and then come back to the approval criteria. Next slide, please. First, I'll turn it over to Chris to introduce himself and Palmeroy Lodging. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Marcus. Commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Chris Puhala. I'm the executive vice president of real estate for Palmeroy Lodging. We are the applicant today for the Arrowhead Metropolitan District. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to introduce our company and our capabilities as it relates to executing on this metro district and further the development that would come after the metro district is established. We have 32 years of experience in resorts, hotels, and Nordic spas. We have 20-plus resorts, two Nordic spas, and 3,000 team members. We're a vertically integrated company based in Calgary. We operate in North America. We're not a stranger to the U.S. We own Alyeska Ski Resort in Alaska, and our two Nordic spas were both developed independent adjacent to our resorts, which we own. And both of those, the last point I'd like to make to the board today is both of those are developed and operated in highly sensitive environmental areas. We have an expertise in both development and in operating in environmental areas where we have national forest leases, we operate our own wetlands, and we operate around and in treasured resources, both in Canada and the National Canadian Rockies and in the U.S. and Alaska. And so, I'll just turn it over to my team from here, and thank you for the opportunity to present today.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Next slide, please. For context, you've seen this map earlier. Again, focusing all of Roxborough, the Roxborough Boundary there in red, looking at the project site adjacent to the Arrowhead Golf Course, really seeing the access. If you go to the next slide, you see a vicinity map that really shows us after you come off of Rampart Range Road into the site, Roxborough Road, and you would turn on Sundown, just as public access is today to the golf course, and then the site is there. We will talk a great deal about that site, but that shows the site parcels 12 and 4 in the existing PD. Next slide, please. This is that site. I am showing you this in land form. You all certainly know this site, but in the foreground, the golf course here, the primary, this is Sundown Road, Sundown Trail, the entrance here. And then also, just wanted to show a connection on the west side of the course, which is generally off of Willow Broom. So, when you hear that discussion, that is the west side. Of course, the spine of the rocks generally here, the east side and the west side as we talk about the proposal. Next slide. Again, for reference, Mr. Chair and commissioners, referencing the outline of the two proposals, as you will hear a lot of discussion, we are only here about the metro district, but to understand those two conceptual, those two potential uses on this site, the white outline shows where the Nordic spa would be located, interior to the site, only on the east side, and then the yellow shows the residential component, obviously accessed on both sides of the site and encompassing all 34 acres. Next slide. Just want to be sure and point out today that this is the original PD amendment that built all of Roxborough. This is the PD that you govern. Thank you for governing this process, and it actually shows all of the community. You see community homes, residential units that exist today on the east side of the course, here off of Sundown Trail, all of the community that has grown up. As you see, as are our two sites, parcel 12 and 14, they are zoned for planned residential. This site today is a PD that allows residential development to occur on the site. I have full respect for the process, the belovedness of this site, but this is the homestead parcel. These are not save our rocks. This is parcel 12 and 14 from the original PD that a property owner owns and has always been planned. been planned for residential development on this site. You can see the corresponding density that attaches to that original residential PD. Next slide, please. These are the two development scenarios. Again, this is not before you, but it is the background of a lot of comments that you will hear. The residential use, we just talked about, again, allowed in the current PD, and then the Nordic spa use. That would require, does require, a major amendment to the planned development. That is a pending application, but that is a subsequent process. We are not allowed to build a Nordic spa today. That is not allowed in the PD. We have to go through that process. That is a pending application, so that is why the Nordic spa is not before you today. Next slide, please. This is what that change could look like. Again, for reference, just again, seeing the two kind of whale-shaped parcels, if you will. The parcel on the west side, why we denoted that, so we could show that, gets transitioned to open space. It becomes fully open space, whereas the front parcel connected to the golf course has the same designation of club resort. You see the blue continuation from the clubhouse, from the golf course, to our site. That is what would happen in a subsequent process pending your approval and your process. Again, for notes, next slide. I'll transition now with that background, again, understanding the two development scenarios and the site as it's ready to go forward today with a residential development. Megan Becker will now present on the metro district, and I'll come back. Go ahead, Megan.
He's kind enough to let me stay here and sit. If we could go to the next slide, please.
And ma'am, before you begin, please do give your name and your credentials.
Yes, Megan Becker, last name B as in Boye, E-C-H-E-R. With McGee D. Becker, PC, we are attorneys for the applicant. So, just working on establishing a basis for the metro district. I think as the commissioners know, metro districts are a commonly used financial tool throughout the state of Colorado and authorized by statute. There are over 2,400 existing and active metropolitan districts statewide. They are a tool that allows development to pay its own way in Colorado without putting additional financial burdens on surrounding jurisdictions. Only the property within the boundaries of the district has the obligation to pay the taxes associated with financing additional infrastructure for that area. So, widely used. No property owners, taxpayers outside the boundaries of the metro district will be burdened by any additional financial obligations. As you well know, the formation requires approval by the local jurisdiction. In our case, this is the Board of County Commissioners, and we have very specific statutory powers. So, everything you see within the application for the district is based upon what's authorized statutorily and also what the county allows within its model service plan. Would like to note, and you'll hear throughout, that the application that we've provided in the form of service plan is in full compliance with the county's model. So, what can the district do? It can levy and collect taxes, issue debt, provide services, including covenant enforcement, which is included in the district application as authorized by the model. Finance, construct, and maintain public improvements. We'll dig into that a little bit more. You've heard a little bit about the fact that our service plan is limited relative to provision, in particular, water and sewer. We'll dig into that, but those are the statutory authorities. Eminent domain is statutorily authorized. It is authorized by your model, and it is included in the application that we've provided. Again, a district can own and dispose of property. So, again, statutory authorizations included in our application, but with a statutory basis. We can go to the next slide. So, the district itself, looking for authorization of all the basic statutory authorizations. Water, to finance and construct. Sanitation, to finance and construct. You'll see as we walk through, we have always anticipated with our initial application and continued through this, this final version, that the district would not have the authority to provide water and sanitation services. It has always been the intent that that be provided by Roxborough Water and Sand. A will-serv letter included as a part of the service plan does confirm the intent of Roxborough Water and Sand to provide those operation, maintenance, and ownership services after the district constructs. So, that, that is clear in the service plan and has been. But also, street and safety protection, park and recreation improvements. We didn't mention here, I think at the beginning, but to note that the applicant has purchased the property. They are the current owners. They purchased it at the beginning of 2024, which I'm sure you're well aware of. So, there have been significant investments into the property, and they're, they, they have the right under the existing PD for residential uses and desire to move forward as expeditiously as possible with development, and this is one step to be able to do that. The metro district is critical for providing financing for construction of those necessary pieces of infrastructure and for perpetual operation and maintenance of certain of the infrastructure, which would be the park and recreation, certain streets, certain landscape, trails, et cetera. We can go to the next slide. Thank you. This is just, again, the boundary put in the direction that you're probably most familiar with. We can move to the next slide. As mentioned in the staff presentation, budgets are included for both the residential and commercial uses and the infrastructure in either case that would be necessary. You'll see that the cost associated with that infrastructure is about the same in either scenario. And so, what we're asking for, again, compliant with the model, is mills with limits that would authorize the construction of these, these infrastructure improvements irrespective of use and only when the final development plans are approved. So, it is contingent upon those final approvals. We can go to the next slide. Just a few depictions, conceptual depictions of site plans. Here you'll see the residential conceptual site plan with the 31 units spread throughout the larger approximately 35 acres. You can see that the residential units will take up, and as you saw in the earlier slides, more area just by nature of how they would have to be constructed. But in here, you can see the internal roadway and how that would align to both the east and west connections. We can move to the next slide. Context, I'm sorry, conceptual site plan relative to the Nordic spa, as you saw on that earlier slide and can see here, much smaller footprint based just on the east side, but again, internal to the 35 acres approximately, with the west side left untouched. Again, this is purely conceptual. Any of these things will need to be approved in a subsequent process. Next slide, please. You can see here, again, the effect of where the public improvements would be based upon those conceptual site plans. The residential roadways on the left, you know, to, to make clear that anything constructed by the district will need to comply with any overlapping requirements, any jurisdictional requirements relative to planning, including fire access turnaround. So, just to be clear that that is included in both cost estimates. We can move to the next slide. Here are the water infrastructure that would be constructed. Both cases, a looped water system, fire hydrants included, and in all cases, as is required by the service plan, and as a result of the overlap, everything will need to be coordinated with Roxborough Water and Sand. And these conceptual plans have been put in front of and conceptually approved by Roxborough Water and Sand. We can go to the next slide. Here's the sanitation service. Again, you can see the conceptual layouts. Again, everything will have to go through appropriate processes, but you can see the difference in connections and internal plans. Next slide, please. Stormwater, same concept. Again, we just want you to see how some of these things differ. The bottom line is the district will only be constructed, constructing what is ultimately approved by the governing jurisdictions. Next slide, please. And last but not least, I think this is last, the parks and recreation and what those improvements would potentially look like. We'll note there are some, in particular on the Nordic spa side, a concept of streetscape improvements that extend outside of the boundaries of the district. To be clear, to the extent that would be done, it would always be done in conjunction with the surrounding property owners and with all necessary approvals. Next slide, please. Again, just a conceptual picture of some open space that the metro district could participate in providing. Next slide. So, construction schedule, and one of the reasons we're here today, I think as the commissioners know, the districts are organized on a statutory and election-based cycle, which obviously is coming up. And this is, is one of the basic elements we need to be able to move forward, to move into a 2025 construction schedule and get through the election process. That would allow us to get to some of these proposed construction timeframes in 2025 and 2026. So, that's why we're here today. Next slide, please. So, just some of the basics, and your staff covered a lot of this, but in both cases, for financing purposes, we have a debt service mallev limit, not nexus of 50 mills adjusted. That is authorized by your model. We're in compliance with the model. 10 mills for operations, I believe. And let's see, through operations, yeah. In the commercial financing district, a supplemental source of revenue would be public improvement refinancing as well. So, again, I think to note, the residential financing models, commercial financing models have all been reviewed by the county's third-party consultant, and all questions and concerns have been addressed and in the criteria we'll go through in just a little bit. And as your staff has noted, the third party has indicated that the financing plans do satisfy the criteria. So, we'll walk through that as soon as we get to that very shortly here. We can go to the next slide. Talked about this before, fully compliant with the Douglas County model. That includes the mallev caps, which include debt operations and a combined mallev. We do have debt issuance requirements and limitations that have been included. There is a maximum authorized debt amount, as is required. There is the eminent domain authorization, which is authorized by the model and is an important part of the statute. There is an authorization for finance, construction, and maintenance, limited maintenance of public improvements, which does not apply to water and sanitation. That will go to Roxborough Water and Sand. So, only street, safety protection, park and rec are authorized ongoing maintenance services. And to note that the district as a local government is required to comply with all public disclosure requirements. Those include things such as recording disclosures in the real property records, website records complying with Colorado Open Records, budgeting, audits, elections, et cetera. District will be subject to all of those things. Again, similar construction costs for either the residential or commercial development and will apply directly to whatever that final approved uses. Next slide. So, digging into quickly the approval criteria, which your staff already reviewed. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I went too fast. This is the Roxborough Water and Sanitation District overlap page. We wanted to, to lay out for you the process and thought behind that. I'd like to note that the statutory requirement is that no special district can be organized within an existing special district that provides the same service. But nothing statutorily shall prevent a special district from providing different services from an existing special district here from the beginning. We've obviously known that this property is overlapping the Roxborough Water and Sanitation District. From the beginning, in preparation of the service plan, we've, we've communicated with them, and in fact, in preparing the service plan, received the will-serv letter and evidence of compliance with the water supply plans that are included in the service plan as Exhibit J. So, those came as a part of the preparation process. It's been stated from the beginning in the service plan that the proposed Arrowhead Metro District will finance and construct water and sanitation improvements, but that Roxborough Water and Sand will own, operate, and maintain them once conveyed to Roxborough Water and Sand. It's always been the intent. And so, the district is not, in, in all drafts of the service plan, has not been explicitly authorized to own, operate, or maintain those improvements. So, that's been since day one. As far as the timeline for the consent, we learned the day of planning commission that part of the comments received from Roxborough Water and Sand were to a suggestion that we receive consent. So, although we didn't believe it was necessary, because the service plan did provide that they would provide operation and maintenance, we would only construct and finance, we did in good faith go and to seek that consent as a courtesy. That hearing through the Roxborough Water and Sand Board was held on September 18th, and the overlap was denied by three of the five board members after going through all of the bases for the overlap and reiterating that we are not seeking an overlap of service. We are not seeking to provide the same service. We simply want to construct and finance and then hand the improvements to Roxborough Water and Sand in accordance with all of their regulations for perpetual operation and maintenance. And so, the, it was denied. We maintain, just as we did in the beginning, that it's not necessary, though, because we are not providing the same services. We did, as a result of the board meeting that was held, provide additional clarifying language in the service plan to hopefully make it abundantly clear it was never the intent to provide the same service, and we will not be authorized to provide the same service. So, some of the language that you received, I think that was just handed to you, shows that red line, so it's abundantly clear. That is not the intent, and that is not what's authorized to have any overlap of services, that different services are being provided by the two entities. That said, we can move to the next slide.
Terrific. I'll stop in here for a few minutes to give Megan a break. I want to transition that information that was just shared with you to actually talk about the metro district in action, how it works, and talk about community considerations. I will again say this is a single district service plan and completely compliant with your Douglas County Model Service Plan. I will say, these next items are the reality for any development scenario. Doesn't matter the use, residential or a potential change to a Nordic spa. It is the reality, the requirements that are needed, and it actually reinforces the need for the metro district formation. Next slide. As you see on the left, these are required easements that are required today, why the metro district is needed. This actually shows a residential development scenario, and it shows sanitary sewer, sanitary lines that need to be established down Sundown. So, you see off-site, off of our parcel, working with the Roxborough Foundation on acquire, allowing that to be constructed down Sundown Trail. This has to be allowed for any development scenario to be developed. Next slide. This shows there on the east side, again, with the residential use, it shows a connection, the requirement, that easement on Willow Broom Trail, showing that connection that needs to be put in place for there to be sanitary lines that then would serve the site, right? Again, looking at, we must have that connection through this process. Next slide. As we look here again, this is now the water. Set aside the sanitary sewer, sewer services, this is the water line, again, Willow Broom Trail, and then a connection at Rain Dance Trail. You see the connection across the golf course there to make that trail. I think what we are showing here is there is a longstanding history that we are happy to address, where the Roxborough Foundation, which you will hear from shortly, has shown no indication that they will work with us to provide the necessary easements, that they are trying to govern this site. We respect the process that we are in today, that you get to make those determinations, that you get to make those decisions. But regardless, this is the process that any development scenario has to go forward. Next slide. This actually shows specifically on a foundation dispute that we are having with the Roxborough Foundation that is ongoing and that has implicated this process in front of the county commissioners. I want to refresh back the challenges that we are having and perhaps why there is some tension in the room. You look last May, before you, there was a vacation of County Road 5 that was brought before you and was approved by this body for other reasons, not questioning that at all, but it ultimately stranded the homestead property that is before you. We do not have access to our parcel today. Let's talk about how that happened. The foundation represented to county staff and to U.S. Commissioners that no adjoining properties would be left without access and that the foundation would grant all necessary easements. The foundation then recorded that easement, as you can see at the recording level, or recording record there, but it did not include the homestead property. We were omitted. We have no access granted by that approval. Your city attorney, Senior Assistant Attorney Chris Pratt, after a discussion with county commissioners in a public meeting, sent the letter that said, "I am sure that the homestead property was, quote, mistakenly orphaned, and that the easiest way to rectify this oversight would be to amend and grant and include the homestead property with a note allowing use of foundational roads as needed for access." The answer, back- The answer, back to you, was, the foundation said, "No, thank you. We reject your request, and we continue to deny public access to the homestead property, using foundation roads consistent with the concerted effort to prevent development of this property." Now it has gone to Roxboro Water and Sand. Those easements we need, they are working through that process to make the decisions about land use matters. So here, we do not have access to this parcel because of an activity that came before you and has not been rectified through foundation actions. Next slide. So what we want to show here is the other thing that we listened to. So we need those requirements, why our district formation is so important. We also want to encourage you, as you hear speakers today, hear and talk about potential issues, issues that are actually in the community today. You will hear about fire mitigation, traffic, fire evacuation, all of these issues. And I actually want to propose, the district, the formation of the district is actually the vehicle that will address these issues. This is how we solve these issues. Let's give a few examples of that. Next slide. Thank you. This is specifically about fire mitigation. As you see here, Sundown Road in blue, purple, that color there. Then Roxboro Drive takes it all the way out to Rampart. You will hear today that there are fire evacuation issues today because of the golf course, the community, and our potential use, future use if allowed, for a Nordic Spa. Well, with our district and the approval of the foundation, working collaboratively, we could actually add a second lane south of Roxboro Road or south of Sundown Trail, and allow there to be fair and free access out of the site. We could go through that process, work with them, and provide additional access. Next slide. This shows existing problem today, from neighbors, as you will hear, approaching on Roxboro Road to turn left onto Sundown. The public vehicles that go to the golf course today, there's concerns about it slows down there. There's queuing, particularly in ice and snow. This would allow us, with the permission and collaboration, to build a left-hand turn lane, allow community traffic to continue into the neighborhood, and allow that passage, that traffic movement down Sundown to the golf course, and eventually to our land use. Next slide. This also shows, again, fully respecting collaboration with the Roxboro Foundation, the ability to address Sundown Trail and Sundown Drive, working with them on the roadway improvements, the widening, any landscaping, any streetscaping, maybe to not allow parking that is plaguing that area today because of golf course parking, right? We would have the ability to work with them, with their permission, to address this issue that is really impacting the neighborhoods that access off of Sundown. Next slide. Again, I'll end here. We understand that streetscaping is really an opportunity to improve the additional community. This is an off-site ability that we could work, utilize the district with the Roxboro Foundation. We are not suggesting in any way that we can do these without their blessing, but we want to work with them and address the community issues that you will hear today. Next slide. I will transition here for Megan to address the approval criteria, and we will close our presentation. Megan.
And I'll walk quickly through these, because you've heard from your staff on each of these criteria, about just listing them one final time. Sufficient existing and projected need for organized service within the district. We believe this has been satisfied. Without the district, there isn't an organized service provider to provide the public infrastructure that the district is proposed to provide. There's an existing need irrespective of use, and a future projected need for ongoing maintenance of park and recreation, streetscape improvements irrespective of use. Existing service and boundaries is inadequate. Again, we believe this is satisfied. There is no existing public infrastructure within the boundaries, so there is a complete inadequacy of service currently. Capable of providing economical and sufficient service, this condition we believe is satisfied. Evidence through the finance plans attached to the service plan and as reviewed by the county's outside consultants. Again, irrespective of either use. Next slide, please. Area and district boundaries has or will have ability to discharge debt on a reasonable basis. This is also satisfied, as confirmed by the county's third-party financial consultant in the materials that have been included. Fifth, adequate service is not or will not be available through the county or other districts. This has been satisfied. There is no other entity, again, willing to provide the services that the district is proposing to provide. Facility and service standards are compatible with the county and other governing districts, again, satisfied, because the service plan requires and provides that all infrastructure that it builds must be constructed in accordance with the standard of the county, Roxboro Water and Sand, and any other applicable local governments that it must comply with. Next slide, please. Oops, went too far. Thank you. Compliance with county master plan, as your staff has indicated. This is also satisfied. The service area of the district is within the Roxboro separated urban area of the CMP with the development objectives that outlined by your staff. Proposal in compliance with the applicable long-range water quality management plan, again, satisfied, as evidenced by the information received by Roxboro Water and Sand, included it as Exhibit J to the service plan. And finally, best interest of the area to be served. Again, we believe the Metro District satisfies this, because given the lack of any existing public infrastructure, and with no other service providers willing or able to provide what the district will provide, the infrastructure is essential to development in either scenario. And I think that's it.
Yes, for all the foregoing reasons, we respectfully request your support. Our whole team is here to answer any questions. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks, guys. Okay, so turning to the board. Any questions for the applicant, or even staff at this time?
Yeah, so thank you for that. I do have a number of questions. I mean, obviously, for us, we are bound by the legal criteria and are always, as a board, balancing private property rights with the interests and liberties of our citizens. This is a very special community in Douglas County. And the rocks themselves represent just eons of really significant historical artifacts. I mean, it's deeply significant, and we know that. You know, I think part of the question that I might have is related to the referral comments. And I think that's on page 1,500 of our 2,500-page packet. And the referral letter from Roxboro Water and Sand, again, talks about the number of residences it would serve. You're looking for north of 30, and they're saying 18. Can you address the discrepancy?
I'm happy to address that. Thank you very much, Commissioner. And we share your comments. This is an absolute sacred site, and we have profound respect for. Our development plans are actually based on trying to protect and preserve and create that space and share that with all, rather than make them residential lots. Commissioner, to address your first question about, just to clarify, excuse me, can you ask the last part of it again?
Yep, no problem. So it's on page 1,954. There's a letter from Roxboro Water and Sand, provide a comment regarding the infrastructure requirement for 31 residential units, but they only committed service to 18.
Sure. So what has happened there is the property owners, the original property owners, which Pomeroy purchased the site from, went through the process over the last 20 years of paying for water taps, for water service to this site. So based on that underlying PD for parcels 12 and 14, they paid for and reserved water usage on that site. Commissioner, what that allows for are 19 single-family residential units, what they paid for, and/or the EQR, the equivalence of that, which actually results in 31 units. That would be a combination of single-family homes and townhomes. But sir, it's based on that amount of water that is allocated, right? So the PD actually allows more density, if you will, on this site. But there's only enough water for that. So I'm sorry, you'll hear a lot of different numbers. We're very clear in what our drawing show when we worked with Roxboro Water and Sand, laid out the conceptual layout. That is based on 31, because that is the same equivalent of water usage that they paid for.
Okay, so it's saying Roxboro Water and Sand will consider this request at their next board meeting on the 18th. Did that happen?
Yes. So that is where we brought forward the consent, request for consent to overlap, at the suggestion of Roxboro Water and Sand. Again, we didn't believe it's necessary, because we are not providing the same services. So when we brought it forward to the board, the vote was three against, two for, the consent. What we did as a result of that vote is come back, and in your subsequent packet, again, we believe the language was initially sufficient to, and stated, "District will only construct and finance. It will not operate and maintain." But we added additional language that explicitly states the Metro District will not be able to provide that same operation and maintenance service as Roxboro Water and Sand is going to. It was never the intent, but we made it abundantly clear in the service plan that we're not authorized to do so. So we clarified it in the language of the service plan.
Okay. So is there a staff response to that?
Commissioner, this is Lauren Pulver with staff. As the applicant mentioned, they have provided revised staff, or revised service plan that they believe meets the needs of the overlapping service requirement.
Okay. And then any additional response from Roxboro Water and Sand on that?
We have not received anything in addition.
Okay. You know, the other big issue and question I would have for the applicant is, you know, I'm the founder and chair of our Douglas County Wildfire Action Collaborative. It's the number-one potential threat affecting our entire county and many counties in the state. Very thankful we have the only heli-tac team as a county in the state. We fought 18 fires recently, five of which were out of the county, and now we're getting paid back on those firefighting efforts. But I'm really concerned about ingress egress to this community. It's beautiful, it's special, but it's very landlocked. This board approved about $13 million for the construction of the Southern Connector. And so, we're really pleased that we have that additional thoroughfare to connect this community to Castle Rock. But I'm intrigued by your comment that through this Metro District, you will have the infrastructure to improve egress from this community in the event of an emergency. So help me understand that.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to address it. We share that same concern, Commissioner. I think that this community actually should really be applauded for the study and the analysis that they have put in place. They're very thoughtful about the public that comes to the golf course, and then the potential, if a Nordic Spa were to be approved, additional people there, and what would that do? What we are offering, Commissioner, is this Metro District has the ability to actually finance, in collaboration with the foundation, off-site improvements to address that. That's a shared public infrastructure. So we would, as was on the map, I don't know if we can go to that, but south of Sundown, that's where that public traffic comes in, right? That is the primary congestion point from those studies. We would be able to basically expand or add a secondary lane to allow that evacuation to happen. So what we're proposing, again, is, we agree. And all of these issues that we hear that are concerns, traffic, fire mitigation, let us address them, right? Let us use the tools that are there to build infrastructure to address those tools. We can't just identify the issue and then say, "Oh, I know you can address it." That's why we want to proactively show that we think, Commissioner, there's a great opportunity to utilize this tool in coordination with the community and those services to provide that access. So understanding the burden, that impact, allowing us to use that to help address the issue.
Well, I appreciate that. And again, that's very interesting to me that you would provide that sort of infrastructure to allow for emergency egress. Let me ask our staff, and specifically Public Works and Engineering staff, if this proposed emergency egress would address the additional potential traffic? Do we have somebody who can answer that?
Commissioner Lauren Pulver with staff. I don't believe we have someone with engineering to answer that, as it's not part of the service plan.
Okay. It's significant to me, and I know we have a lot of other legal criteria that I'm very focused on, but it's still an important question. If you can get engineering down here, I would appreciate that. And I would also be curious to know what the level of traffic would be as a result of this potential. You know, and I know we're getting a little bit ahead of where we're at today, but I think it's an important question.
So the one thing that I can offer, and I say this is more of a comparison, again, residential allowed, but it would require a site plan approval, right? So as part of that, we would say, here's the 31 units, here's the traffic trips that correspond, and the roadway improvements, right? Then in our PD application, a PD application for the Nordic Spa, traffic study required, submitted, all of those things. What I should note is that the addition of seven residential units, seven residential units, triggers a traffic count that goes over 1,000 trips a day on Sundown, okay? That is defined within the foundation, in their covenants, basically, and our engineer can go through that, that requires an additional improvement to that roadway. So Commissioner, I am saying to you that even seven more residential units requires the same improvement. Hence, why a Metro District is required for either use. If there is a residential use, which there has ostensibly been a lot of support from, from the foundation, we still would need that approval to move forward and make improvements to Sundown. So I say that more in passing. Obviously, we'd have to go through that same. But it is very important, and why we showed them side by side, those requirements, those infrastructure improvements would be required for either use.
Okay. Well, I have a bunch of other questions, but I'll defer to my colleagues. I know you guys probably have thoughts as well.
Before we continue with questions from the board, hey, let's, how does the board feel about taking a quick bio-break and doing a quick recess?
I would support that. I know we've been going three hours strong, so I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. And maybe we could turn the air conditioning down a little bit?
The benefits of a wool suit. Okay, let's go ahead and take 10 minutes, commissioners? Okay, recess for 10 minutes.
From an equivalent residential perspective, they will utilize the same amount. From the volume of water, we've done an analysis and the resident, the Nordic spa will actually use about half the water that the residential would, based on what Douglas County has provided in historic data on residential usage and based on Pomeroy's currently operating spa in Alaska.
Okay. My other question about Roxborough Water is about the September 18th meeting when they voted no. So was that no to provide you service? Explain that to me, please.
Sure. Let me, I think we're on, yeah. Apologies. No, so the no was related to a resolution to consent for overlap of services. The suggestion that the metro district, which is in front of us today, would provide the same services as the Roxborough Water and Sanitation District, which is not the case, as we've discussed and provided additional clarifying language in the service plan that the district will purely finance and construct, and the Water and Sanitation District will own, operate, and maintain after construction. The Roxborough Water and Sanitation District, as included in the service plan, has provided a will-serv letter indicating their confirmation that irrespective, they will serve so long as we comply with the rules, regulations, building standards, et cetera. Per the service plan, we're obligated to do that. So they, the will-serv letter has been provided. It's been included with the service plan. That exists, and per the will-serv letter, they will provide service, which is different than the district constructing the infrastructure to give to them. So the consent to overlap would be if we were providing, for instance, if the district wanted to construct, finance, operate, maintain, which we do not. We know that Roxborough Water and San is going to do that, that second half.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. So number, my question's been taken care of by my colleagues. My question still has to do just with ownership, and I think I said it, I heard it said during the presentation, but at this time, Pomeroy, the owner, owns everything within the district boundary, or there's still some parcels that are not owned?
The, what will be included within the boundaries of the district is fully owned by the applicant.
Okay, so applicant has full ownership within the proposed district delineated on the map by the blue line, everything within it.
That is correct. Yes, Mr. Chair, we purchased and closed on the site. Go ahead, Quin.
With one notable exception, there is a blue box kind of towards the top of the page. That property is actually owned by Denver Water. That property is the hole in the middle of the district. It is not included.
So that will not be within the boundaries? It's excluded from what will be in the boundaries? So there's, yeah, as Quin mentioned, there's a little donut hole, which will not be in the boundary, so everything else is owned by the applicant.
Okay, so except for that little donut hole owned by Denver Water, everything else within the blue lines is owned by Pomeroy right now?
Correct.
And those blue lines constitute the extent of the district?
Correct. Yes.
All right. Okay. Okay. I think that, based on the questions my colleagues had, I think that's my question. Okay. Commissioners, any second shots and any further questions for the applicant at this time?
You know, it's, so many of my questions are not related to what is before us today. I have concerns about traffic. I have concerns about parking. I've got concerns about noise, but that, those are not the issues that are before us today, so I want to reserve my questions to the basis of the application.
Okay. As is right and appropriate. Very good, Commissioner. All right. At this stage of the game, we'll go ahead and transition to public testimony. I do have, yes, Commissioner?
I did have one quick question following your question. So if everything in your district is already owned by Pomeroy, how would you use the eminent domain power that you would have?
So the eminent domain power is exercised by the district upon organization when and if necessary to gain access for necessary public infrastructure. So in the examples that Marcus gave toward the end of the presentation, potential access concerns, were the, were, in either use, a final infrastructure plan will be determined with all necessary parties, right? County, Roxborough Water and San, the foundation to the extent necessary, there's going to ultimately be a determined plan for public infrastructure to provide for the property, right, irrespective of use. So we go through that process. We know the accesses we need to put in that infrastructure. Were the district unable to secure property necessary for those accesses, whether it's to install a water line that will ultimately be owned by Roxborough Water and San, whether it's to improve a street as the public infrastructure, public infrastructure plan requires? If the district were unable to secure what it needs to provide that infrastructure that's been determined by everyone as necessary, the eminent domain process can be utilized. And it's only in that circumstance that it could be utilized by the district.
Commissioner Thomas, I would just add, just because this map is up or this image is up as an example, outside of the district boundaries in blue, right, that shows that those yellow extensions there, these are required water easements to develop the residential. That shows an example of if there was a requirement to make that connection off of our, off of the district property and over to that area. That's an example.
You also spoke about not having access to your property. Could this be a solution or would, could this be used as a solution to that problem?
Again, if it's part of that necessary infrastructure plan, it's a potential solution.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Layden, any second shot?
Nothing further for me at this time.
All right. I have no questions further at this time. I'm going to go ahead and open up public testimony at this time. And first name I've got on the sign-up sheet, Kevin Johnc. Kevin, come on forward. Even though I did call your name, please do give us your name, tell us where you're from, and you'll be given three minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Johnc, J-O-H-N-K. I'm the Director of Engineering for Sterling Ranch, and I'm also a resident of Highlands Ranch. My background is in civil engineering and land planning. I have many successful projects across the United States, including projects here in Douglas County, such as the Ridge Gate Neighborhood, as well as portions of the Park Meadows Mall. As an avid runner, outdoor adventurer, and enjoyer of all that Colorado has to offer, the idea of having a regional amenity such as a Nordic spa that benefits the Chatfield Valley, as well as Highlands Ranch, is an incredible opportunity. As such, I want to express support for economic development in the Chatfield area. The proposed Nordic Spa project within the Roxborough Plan Development represents a crucial opportunity for strategic growth in Douglas County. The integration of open spaces, clubs, and resorts will enhance the area's lifestyle offerings and stimulate economic activity by drawing visitors to the area. From an economic development perspective, this metropolitan district will help support tourism to this area and ultimately lead to complementary developments within the Chatfield Valley. Chatfield Valley is poised to become a hub of activity. Already Arrowhead Golf Course, Ravenna, and Lockheed Martin garner a lot of visitors to the area, and the proposed spa would also add new visitors to our region. That would ultimately create jobs, boost local businesses, and increase property values. The anticipated economic impact will be felt across various sectors, supporting our community's long-term resilience and prosperity. In closing, I believe that approving this service plan will propel Douglas County forward as a model of thoughtful and impactful development. It aligns with our shared vision for growth, and it makes Douglas County a better place for everyone. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Next person up, Brian Lentz. Brian, come on forward. Please do state your name for the record and tell us where you're from.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brian Lentz. Last name spelled L-E-N-C-E. My business address is 6237 Roxborough Drive. I'm the General Manager for the Homeowners Association of Roxborough Park Foundation. And I've been authorized by the Board of Directors to speak on their behalf. Firstly, I resent the applicant using this Metro District hearing to present their case for the plaintiff in their lawsuit against the foundation regarding access. I'll argue those lies in court with the applicant. The applicant's service plan is deficient. A metro district for a 35-acre parcel in the middle of a golf course, deep in the heart of a private residential community, doesn't make sense. There is no public benefit. It is not clear what their development plan is, either a commercial spa or a conflicting number of residential units. Whatever it is, they're saying we must be a government. Title 32-1-102 Legislative Declaration states for the special district, one, will serve a public use; two, is for the logical extension of special district services throughout the state; and three, will facilitate the elimination of overlapping services. This proposal does none of that. There are no worthy public improvements. There are no public streets being built for the public, and a water line just for one business. The use of the property defeats the purpose of having a metro district. There could be a single-owner commercial spa where the Metro District Board will always be members. There is no public purpose, and with multiple document uploads and service plan changes at the 11th hour, it is clear the applicant is rushing the process through solely to get the service plan approved. The Planning Commission voted five to one to deny because approval criteria were not met. They concluded there is no need. Need can be defined as something that is essential or very important. A metro district for this parcel is neither essential nor very important. Why does a commercial spa need to be a metro district? There is no evidence as required by Title 32. If you don't need to form a metro district, then don't. There is no need for a metro district for residential either. Roxborough is a private residential community. Development can occur without the need to form a government, and there's infrastructure all around. The parcel south of Sundown Trail was built in cooperation with the foundation for 29 single-family homes. The developer installed all infrastructure, absorbed the costs themselves, and everything was sold at or above the asking price without any problem or need to create a metro district. The market determined the sales price. There is no financial need. If you can't afford $4 million of infrastructure, then you can't afford to develop. We believe the applicant doesn't need to fund infrastructure. Pomeroy has completed over $375 million worth in new hotel development projects in the last 10 years, and the CEO proudly stated to me at a meeting on June 29, 2022, that they have millions of dollars to invest. The Colorado Association of Home Builders rationalizes the creation of a metro district as needing to meet the affordable housing challenge in new housing community developments in Colorado. Six single-family homes of up to 10,000 square feet and townhomes kept for rentals do not meet the need for affordable housing or attainability. Neither, for that matter, does a Nordic spa. This does not meet the needs of a growing community either. Roxborough is not growing. There are only about 25 remaining unbuilt lots in the community. Other than this parcel, our residential PD is 98% built out. Staff said there may be a projected need for a spa. Maybe is defined as something that is uncertain. Staff are therefore uncertain if there is a projected need for the spa. If there is uncertainty, then the application must be denied. You will hear separate testimony that the proposed metro district is not in substantial compliance with the Douglas County Comprehensive Master Plan, in particular, the objective of logical build-out of separated urban areas. Logical is natural or sensible, given the circumstances. A high-intensity commercial spa deep in the heart of our residential community is neither natural nor sensible, and therefore not a logical build-out of our separated urban area. Finally, this is not in the best interests of the area to be serviced. Best interests are when the benefits outweigh the burdens. This is a residential community. To have a commercial development attracting potentially 170,000 annual visitors in the middle of a golf course, deep in the heart of our private residential community, that has been that way for 50 years, is in nobody's best interests and was never the intention of the PD. For residential owners, neither is it in their best interest to be saddled with an average $258,000 debt burden, and the metro district will not be part of Roxborough Park Foundation. As non-members, they would only be allowed to come and go without benefiting from our community center, community events, recycle center, plowing, trail system, and all the other services and amenities we provide. Peaceful coexistence is vital. It is not in the best interests of future owners to feel that they don't belong. The Commissioners will hear from the Foundation's Board of Directors and residents by way of coordinated testimony that entirely corroborates the Planning Commission's five-to-one recommendation to deny. The approval criteria has not been met. I hold the Professional Community Association Manager credential, and having been in this industry for 30 years, it is my professional opinion that if approved, this would be the worst, most devastating outcome for any residential homeowners association I have ever known. I recommend deny. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. It's not a Trump rally, folks. Let's, let's hold off on any applause, please. This is, this is an official meeting. All right. Let's go to Steve Combs. Steve, please do give us your name for the record. Tell us where you're from.
Yes, sir. My, good afternoon. My name is Steve Combs, spelled C-O-M-B-S. I'm the Vice President on the Board of Directors for the Roxborough Park Foundation. I live in the community, and I'm speaking today now as, as a resident. I think it's important for you guys to understand the history, the 53-year history of what we have, so you can appreciate the strength of opposition from its members to this metro district and why this service plan is wholly and completely inappropriate for this area. The applicant has shown absolutely no interest in our history and is ignorant of how hard the community and its residents have fought to retain its private residential character and make our roads 100% private, especially through partnership and cooperation with the county and its developers. Now, Roxborough had a metro district before. In the 1970s, the Roxborough Metro District was formed because there was, was no infrastructure anywhere. It provided water, sewer, and fire protection. Everything else came from the developer. In 1999, Fire Protection Services moved to West Metro and Roxborough Park Metropolitan District became the Roxborough Water and Sanitation District. The metro district ceased to exist because all the services were already being provided for the area. In consideration of the current zoning and land use, this parcel was never intended for commercial use. Only two commercial areas were ever identified. It was logical that both those areas were positioned at the entrance to the PD rather than in the heart of the community, so the commercial traffic would come and go with the least impact on the residential neighborhoods. Commercial Area 1 is owned by the Roxborough Park Foundation. Part of Commercial Area 2 is now occupied by West Metro Fire and Roxborough Water itself. The remaining acreage was rezoned from commercial to residential. The foundation also fought off a developer's application for a hotel on land designated club resort in the past. Instead, there are now 29 single-family homes. Commercial zoning everywhere has been abandoned in favor of the residential. The foundation and its place is not a destination and vacation location. It was designed for 7,000 people. It's been reduced to about 1,055. It's in our best interest to keep it that way. The homestead is not a member. They've never applied to join. The applicant and its predecessors entitle may have paid property taxes and water availability, but has never contributed one cent towards their infrastructure, which they now want to use or just take. Foundation members have paid for all the infrastructures that exist today. The homestead was also a party to a prior PD amendment, including the Third Amendment on 9/2689, which states, "All roads shall be private." The homestead signed and certified their complete approval at that time. I'd ask you guys to recommend deny. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Let's go to John Monahan. John, please come on forward. Do please state your name for the record and tell us where you're from.
Sure thing. Good afternoon or evening. I guess we're approaching that. My name is John Monahan. Last name is spelled M-O-N-A-H-A-N. I'm the Secretary on the Board of Directors for Roxborough Park Foundation. My wife and I live in the community, and I speak today as a resident. A few weeks ago at the Planning Commission meeting, some Commissioners expressed deep concern regarding the timing of this application, and that's understandable. It does feel that the application to establish a metro district has been rushed on several fronts, all to make this voting deadline. The development plans for the property are not clear, spa versus houses. The developer's been late in providing documentation for everyone to review. I'll go through that in just a second. The developer's been less than open and transparent in coordinating with the foundation. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. And it feels this metro district approach is a method to get around the PD amendment process, which has now been extended twice with no hearing in sight. By rushing through this metro district through, the developer hopes we won't have time to review the documentation, assess what they're asking for, and will possibly miss key aspects in the rush to approve. We need to do it right and take our time. Some additional details. The applicant did not have the courtesy to go ahead and inform the foundation that they were submitting a service plan to the county for approval. We only found out. We're not a referral agency. We only found out through a third party. For all the applicant's proclamations that they want to work with the foundation, I got to tell you, it doesn't feel good that any of this was done in good faith or open, transparent communication. Further, the foundation was blindsided during the Planning Commission. There were late submissions of materials and then further compounded when new documents were produced the day of the meeting with no opportunity of review. By the way, that same thing has happened in the past day or two with this one. It's a pattern of behavior. The service plan is ill-conceived. It's ignorant of actual needs, and as a fellow neighbor is going to tell you in a couple seconds, it's financially flawed. Pushing through this metro district is a ploy because elements of the PD amendment, such as access to non-approved land use, won't then be an issue. The metro district would have the power of eminent domain that we've talked about today and could take property if it serves their purpose. The applicant is saying, no matter what, we need to be a government. We contend that premature approval for the service plan might also unfairly prejudice the outcome of the PD amendment application. A service plan should come after the PD amendment hearing. At very least, the metro district should be put on hold until after the PD amendment and associated legal matters are resolved. I recommend deny. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Ellie, although you're no stranger to the board, please do give us your name. Tell us where you're from.
Hello, Commissioners. And actually, I'm going to try to keep it to three minutes, but I might need six since I am here on behalf of the Douglas County EDC tonight.
Okay, let's go ahead and give her six minutes, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's good to see you all. My name is Ellie Reynolds, and I'm the CEO of the Douglas County EDC. I'm here to discuss the significant economic impact of establishing the Arrowhead Colorado Metropolitan District and to offer my support, our over 300 member support, and our board. The homestead project within the Roxborough Plan Development represents a pivotal opportunity for our economic landscape, specifically along the 85 corridor, and what we believe the Chatfield region can grow to be. Spanning 36 acres, this project is designed to integrate residential living with open space, resort fields, and recreation facilities that so many of us have discussed in our master plan for that area. From an economic development standpoint, this project stands to invigorate our, invigorate our local economy by enhancing property values and attracting new residents and businesses to that area. Make no mistake, this project is an important piece in the catalyst that will serve that area, in the resort communities that we're looking for, in the hotels that we're looking to serve the area, and to create that experience and event space we have all talked about. The introduction of diverse facilities will not only enhance the quality of life for that area, but also create jobs and stimulate our economy. Positioning Roxborough as a beacon for tourism and recreation, this initiative underscores our commitment to developing that vibrant economy ecosystem. Approving the metro district is more than a step towards development, but it is also an investment in our county's future prosperity. I urge you to approve this service plan as it aligns with our strategic goals and the Comprehensive Master Plan. It does fit within that use of the public golf course and the recreation that currently exists. Thank you for your time tonight, Commissioners.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Next one, Dean, I'm going to say Liming.
Yes.
All right. I get it right. Dean, come on forward. Do give us your name again for the record. Tell us where you're from.
Sure. Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dean Liming, spelled L-I-M-I-N-G. I am the Treasurer on the Board of Directors for Roxborough Park Foundation. I live in the community, and I am also speaking today as a resident. The service plan has been rushed, is full of inconsistencies, and its feasibility and viability are in doubt. With this uncertainty, the service plan should be rejected and not predicated on approval or denial of a PD amendment. The applicant has no experience developing or operating a standalone spa not affiliated with a hotel or resort. There's no independent market research to accompany spa revenue projecting, revenue ramping up to $20 million per year. The serviceable available market is projected at 240,000 people annually, but basing this on population proximity, state park attendances, or Red Rock concertgoers is just pure guesswork. What if the day, what if day visits are far less than projected? What if there's another pandemic? Public infrastructure fees will dry up, bonds will not get paid, and the county could declare the metro district bankrupt. Furthermore, there is contradictions in the service plan as to how many residences are being built. The plan, map, and Hilltop Securities memo refer to 31 units. However, Exhibit H2 shows 37 units, 31 townhomes, and six single-family homes. This overstates assessed value, the district mill levy revenue, and therefore the revenue available for debt service, rendering the absorption schedule incorrect. The BBC consulting member and them based their findings on 37 units and a spa, which contradicts the service plan. Excuse me. At the Planning Commission meeting, Commissioner McKinson stated, quote, "It's going to take $16 million to pay off $8 million of debt for a $4 million project. I'm challenged that it is needed," end quote. Across 31 homes, this is an average 358,000 additional debt service burden and not in the best interests of the residents in that area. Commissioner Browning stated, quote, "The math doesn't play out very well there. How do you pay for 4.1 million of infrastructure with a 50 mil cap on 31 residences?" End quote. The answer, quote, "You don't pay for all of it. The rest will need to come from other sources of funds, likely developer equity," end quote. Hilltop notes that the service plan does not specify if developer advances count against the debt limit or if they are subject to annual appropriation. The interest rate for these advances could go well above 8%. Furthermore, its interest is not simple. It is allowed to compound. Finally, Hilltop notes that the assumptions regarding the base share are not consistent with the corresponding requirements of the service plan, and the district will not be able to levy the 50 mils as shown in the financial plan that would result in less revenue for debt service. The service plan should be rejected. I recommend deny it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Barbara Buslowski? Did I get that right?
Nailed it.
All right. Barbara, please come forward. Do give us your name for the record and tell us where you're from.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Barbara Buslowski. Last name spelled B-U-S-L-A-W-S-K-I. I am the Member-at-Large on the Board of Directors for Roxborough Park Foundation. I live in the community, and I speak today as a resident. The applicant's spokesperson made several comments at the Planning Commission and today that I would like to address. Comment: This has always been planned for development. For residential, yes, but never for commercial nor metro district. All commercial areas were planned for outside the community entrance. The only club resort parcel remaining south of Sundown Trail has been developed out as residential. Comment: The family has paid for those taps for 20-plus years, so they paid for that. They may have paid for the water taps, but they've never paid assessments and therefore paid no cost for the infrastructure as a foundation member. Comment: Five houses or the Nordic spa will trigger widening of the road. This is a Douglas County standard. A private road would have to be widened because it goes over 1,000 trips. There is no language regarding triggering road widening. The Foundation's roadway planning, design, and construction standards of March 1995 states. All roadways are to be privately owned and maintained. The design and construction standards of Douglas County are applicable to these roadways except where specifically cited herein. The document states that deviations shall be subject to the approval of RPF and DC engineering. Our standards state a maximum number of trips for each type of road, and only if that maximum is exceeded can the foundation and county grant a variance. We would not agree to the breach in the event of commercial construction, and we are not obligated to modify the road just because of a potential breach. The homestead is a third party to the golf course's easement for access with the foundation and therefore cannot overburden it or modify it. Comment: We are going through perfection trying to perfect our access to the site today. Meaning, the applicant recognized it does not have access for a non-approved commercial land use. The PD amendment might be denied, so their definition of perfecting access is by suing the foundation. Comment: Sundown is a private road that goes to the golf course, which we have an access across. The easement states the access is being granted to the parties anticipation that the homestead property will be developed for residential purposes. If the homestead property is fully developed and used primarily for purposes other than residential, the homestead's right to use the access easement shall terminate and revert back to price and its successors. That is why they need eminent domain. I recommend deny. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Bob Steele, S-T-E-E-L-E, and I have lived in Roxborough Park Foundation community since 2013. At the Planning Commission meeting regarding the power of eminent domain, the applicant said that they were, quote, "asking for that basic authorization." And if it were to ultimately be necessary as a power of the district, we are simply asking for that authority when and if ever it becomes necessary. It is certainly not the intent, and other options would have to be exhausted to go that path. If that power were ever to be utilized in very limited fashion, it is for public infrastructure." End quote. Commissioners, please ask the applicant specifically where they think utilizing eminent domain will be necessary. The applicant has a problem with access for an unapproved land use. They have recognized the inherent weaknesses in their argument for a major PD amendment and perhaps fear their lawsuit for access may also fail. So they need a Metro District approval to circumvent these issues and just take property that does not belong to them. Multiple service plan maps indicate Sundown Trail and proposed infrastructure extends to the boundary of the Metro District. It does not. The applicant would need to construct a road across the golf course to their property. Map Exhibit A correctly shows there is no connection. There's a reason for that. It's the easement agreement between AGC and the homestead across the golf course, which is restricted to residential use. A commercial spa would terminate the easement. The service plan calls for streetscaping on Sundown Trail, including six residential security gates. Sundown Trail is a private road and may not be modified without the express consent of the foundation. Exercising eminent domain, however, will get around that conundrum also. Metro Districts possess powers and privileges of government entities that private developers and homeowner associations do not otherwise possess and should not be abused. Creating this Metro District is an end run around community issues. The applicant knows they have a problem with access, and eminent domain is their way out and in. The commissioners can withhold the power of eminent domain like several jurisdictions within Colorado, which have this terminology in their service plan templates. We think the commissioners should go further and deny the service plan altogether. If you're talking about preserving community harmony, avoiding animosity and hostility, and being a good neighbor, imposing your goodwill, imposing your will, and exercising eminent domain is not the way to go. We recommend, I recommend, denial, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Lynn, please come forward, and even though you're no stranger to the board, please do give your name and where you're from.
My name is Lynn Moffett. I live at Sterling Ranch, 8032 Williams Fork Avenue. My last name is spelled M-O-F-F-E-T-T. Just for full disclosure, I'm also on Metro District there and the CAB board as a Metro District rep. I'm taking a whole different tact. People are here, they're very, very emotional. We're feeling the same thing in that we're adding amenities that will be public-private amenities in Sterling Ranch, and there's so much that we always have to think about with that. One of the things that we're tackling right now is throughput of traffic and parking. It's something that has to be considered anytime you open a community to a larger group. If that space is to be opened, I can't imagine something that would be better for kind of the prestige and the thought of the community that we have in Douglas County. It's through research, I've learned that the spa that is proposed is to be a wonderful location. The spa that has already been built in Alaska is absolutely a wonderful place to go and relax. Looking at it with Arrowhead Golf Course and where it would be located with Arrowhead Golf Course, it would truly make that public course feel even more rich. I don't have the right to talk about easements or anything, and I definitely don't have the knowledge. What I wanted to take my time to talk about is if we can find a common ground and there is a utility to get people from point A to point B, I think it would be something that would be wonderful to add to our growing community. My last piece through my research is Nordic spas are inherently very quiet places. As a matter of fact, I believe that the spa in Alaska does not allow cellphone usage. They don't allow you to have an iPad out, and they don't want you to have a computer anywhere that anybody can see. So you're talking about a quiet area. So the cars might be the loudest piece that's going through, but once a person is at the spa, I think it would be a very tranquil location. I realize that my preparation might not be in complete alignment with the presentations that were given today, but one of the things that I do want people to consider is if something is to be developed in Douglas County, such as what we are developing at Sterling Ranch, we want the best possible facilities to be developed. And I believe that if we are to develop that area and provide ingress and egress to that area, it would be an ideal kind of a situation. That's all I've got, and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Ron Walker.
Mr. Chair, could I ask for the board's benefit and probably the citizens as well that we have the legal approval criteria on the screen for us?
Let's do it.
Are you ready, Paul?
One moment, sir.
Does the time start after he introduces himself?
Okay, hang on a second, folks. Let's not go crazy. Yeah, we'll start time, sir, as soon as you give us your name and tell us where you're from, but let's accommodate the commissioner's request to get the approval criteria up. All right. Thank you, DJ Commissioner. Sufficient?
It is. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Ron, apologies for the delay. Please give us your name, tell us where you're from.
It's not Walker. It's Walker. Good afternoon. My name is Ron Walker, W-A-L-K-E-R. I'm a former member of the Board of Directors, and I live in the Roxborough Park Foundation community. The proposed Metro District is not in substantial compliance with the Douglas County Commission Master Plan and should therefore be denied. The Comprehensive Master Plan vision statement states that the Comprehensive Master Plan honors and protects its unique, diverse communities and resources. The Comprehensive Master Plan recognizes Roxborough as having one of the most stunning landscapes in the country, in the county, I would argue, in the country, with unique character. As one of the most diverse communities in the county, Roxborough should be protected from the threat a commercial enterprise would bring to this distinct land plan area. The plan also states that future growth is shaped by community values such as access, the natural environment, property values, quiet, peaceful in privacy, and the unique rural area. These values guide land use decisions. Roxborough possesses all of these values in abundance, and they are immense important to the residents. These values should guide the particular land use decision. The proposed Metro District for a commercial spa represents a very real threat to these values. The Comprehensive Master Plan calls for a balanced future by stating that the vision for the future has turned toward preserving the quality of life residents enjoy. This project is an encroachment on the quality of life our residents enjoy and will not preserve it. The plan also states that the county plans for the future by focusing on the growth-related topics, such as identifying and protecting important viewpoints and identifying areas for commercial activities. In the county's staff comments to a prior pre-submital for this site, PS 2021-188, planning pointed out that the site contains significant rock formations that are important visual and cultural elements for the overall Roxborough community. We contend this area is entirely unsuitable for commercial activity. Regarding implementation, the Comprehensive Master Plan states that the public has a key role in the implementation of the CMP by providing feedback to Douglas County through the development view process. We hope that the county commissioners will take note of the overwhelming majority of residents in opposition to this amendment, corroborated by a vote of the community held at a special meeting of the members, in which 96.8% of the community were opposed to a commercial spa. I recommend deny. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. I'm going to go with Scott Strand. You can correct me, sir, when you come on forward, and please state your name and tell us where you're from.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Scott Strader. That's S-T-R-A-D-E-R. And I'm a member of the Design Review Committee at Roxborough Park. I also live in the Roxborough Park community. The proposed Metro District is not in substantial compliance with the Douglas County Comprehensive Master Plan and therefore should be denied. Section 2 of the Master Plan, General Urban Land Use, states urban development in Douglas County should consider environmental and visual resources that include wildlife, habitat, recreation, and sense of place. Roxborough residents truly do have a sense of place in their community, citing environmental and visual resources as one of the main things, and this could irrevocably be disturbed by this project. Policy 2-1-C1 states achieve consistency among land use and developmental regulations. This is inconsistent land use. Not one single amendment in the history of PD amendments for Roxborough Park has changed land use from residential to commercial. Never. Policy 2-1-C2 states determine the actual density and intensity of development by considering potential environmental and visual impacts and compatibility with existing adjacent or planned uses. The adjacent use is a golf course. A commercial spa in the middle of a golf course accessed through a residential neighborhood increases density and intensity and is incompatible. 2-5-A1 states locate development away from environmentally and visually sensitive lands. This development is right in the heart of that. Policy 2-5-A2 states protect the integrity of urban areas by protecting views to and from significant natural features, which you have acknowledged. Views will not be protected. The number, size, height, design, and location of all buildings and facilities are unknown at this time, as well as their proposed 265-car parking lot that on their design shows it'll be in the highest spot in the golf course. Policy 2-6-Echo 1 states isolated development is inconsistent with this plan. The spa is not being developed in conjunction with any other enterprise. It would therefore be an isolated development. 2-6-E3 states locate and design intensive non-residential land uses to minimize conflicts with residential developments, wildlife areas, and environmentally or visually sensitive areas. This is in direct conflict with residential development, both in terms of access, traffic, and threats to effective emergency evacuation. This is a wildlife area, very sensitive. 2-9-A2 states ensure the new development mitigates impacts to existing services and infrastructure. A commercial spa will have a huge negative impact on the foundation's entry station, and the addition of over 80,000 vehicle trips on stretches of our roads will take a massive toll on these private roads. I recommend deny. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Pete Dalabetta. Sir, come on forward. State your name. Tell us where you're from.
My name is Pete Dalabetta, spelled D-A-L-L-A, space B-E-T-T-A, and I am a resident of Roxborough Park Foundation community. The proposed Metro District is not in substantial compliance with Douglas County Comprehensive Master Plan and should therefore be denied. The Comprehensive Master Plan focuses on separated urban areas. Roxborough Park is a separated urban area defined as previously zoned, isolated urban development, a distinct land planning area with unique character, location, and varying levels of service. As one of only three separated urban areas in the entire county, Roxborough deserves the commissioner's special consideration and sensitivity to the aggressive developer attempts to completely change the character of the area purely for financial gain. Objective 2-15-A states, excuse me, support the logical build-out of SUAs. There is nothing logical about approving a commercial day spa inside a golf course within a residential community that is 98% built out with 1,030 single-family homes and no commercial enterprises. There are no remaining commercial parcels or land designated club resort within the PD that can be developed. Policy 2-15-C1 states develop in a manner that complements and enhances the existing developmental pattern of adjoining neighborhoods, including density, scale, and landscaping. The development pattern for the PD has been purely residential, with a reduction in density from the original two units per acre to one unit per acre, 1,054 homes on 1,043 acres. The amendment does not complement or enhance the existing developmental patterns of the adjoining neighborhood. Policy 2-15-D2 states approve only low-intensity land uses, such as open space, agricultural, recreation, and residential development in areas adjacent to separated urban areas. It stands to reason that if only low-intensity land uses, such as residential development, are to be approved in areas adjacent to SUAs, then only low-intensity land uses should be approved within the SUA. It should be noted that recreation is defined in the Comprehensive Master Plan as either recreation active. Activities include field sports, soccer, baseball, et cetera, playground facilities, and skateboard parks. Recreation passive. Activities include walking, hiking, biking, horseback riding, picnicking, and nature study. By these definitions, a commercial spa is not a recreational land use, and I recommend deny. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Mr. Thomas, please come forward. Give us your name for the record, as well as tell us where you're from.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Dave Thomas, spelled T-H-O-M-A-S. I am a former board member and a 19-year resident of Roxborough. I'm also going to talk about the Douglas County Comprehensive Master Plan, and with the understanding that the Metro District does not comply. Section 8 of the Comprehensive Master Plan focuses on environmental quality. Peace and quiet are important factors in bringing residents to the county in a natural resource highly valued by residents. That's what the plan says. Biggest complaint we've Biggest complaint we've heard about the, um, the proposed spa is the noise factor. And we have rocks up there that will allow that sound to be extended throughout the, throughout the neighborhood. It is not a, it is not a quiet area. The plan also states low-impact, non-urban use are encouraged in environmental hazardous areas. The geological hazard map of the Cassia Quadrankle nineteen seventy-eight plat five designates this area as an environmental hazardous area. Commercial use, four hundred and fifty vehicles, three hundred and fifty resident, or three hundred and fifty people going to the spa is certainly not considered low-impact. The plan also states low-intensity recreation use is compatible because of the lack of permanent structural environments. This is high intensity. This is commercial use, and they're gonna put a permanent structure up there. Completely goes against the Master Plan. And finally, on the Master Plan, objective eight three A, discourage and avoid development in areas with high potential for wildfire. We are a fire-wise community. We back up to the Pike National Forest. We are very concerned about wildfire. If we have an emergency like Louisville where we have to evacuate over a thousand homes, the last thing we need is four hundred and fifty vehicles that were up at the spa clogging up our roads. I recommend that you deny the application.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Charles Packard, P-A-C-K-A-R-D. I am the general manager at Arrowhead Golf Course, and I have been authorized by Arcus Golf, the owner of Arrowhead, to speak on its behalf. Arrowhead Golf Course strongly objects to a metro district for a commercial spa in the middle of Arrowhead Golf Course. This was never the intent of the plan development and is purely for private gain, and there's no public purpose, and there's no current need, and it's not the best interest of the area to be served. A spa will increase traffic by thousands of cars coming and going right through the heart of our golf operations. This increased traffic going right through the starting and finishing points of multiple holes will significantly and irreparably affect our ability to operate normally while creating an increased safety risk for our customers on the course. It will have profoundly negative effects on the experience of our golfers and will tarnish our reputation of an iconic and historic Robert Trent Jones course that has been in the location for over fifty years. Arrowhead Golf Course has two hundred and twenty parking places. The commercial spa is projected to have two hundred and sixty-five parking spaces, thus more than doubling the potential number of cars at the top of Sundown Trail. Arrowhead Golf Course has been a loyal taxpayer to the county since the course opened all those years ago, and we have been a part of the PD and a member of the Roxborough Park Foundation for fifty-three years. The applicant has never been a member and now wants to insert a Nordic spa into the middle of the golf course. The applicant does not have access to the homestead property for commercial use. The existing easement states the access easement is, is granted for homestead based upon parties' anticipation that the homestead property would be developed for residential purposes. If the homestead property is fully developed and used primarily for those, for purposes other than residential purposes, then notwithstanding the perpetual nature of the access easement, homestead right to use the access easement shall terminate. Unless language granting the power of eminent domain is eliminated from the service plan, the metro district will have the ability to condemn our property and the easement across it so that they can build a boulevard whatever width they like across the property for not used, not approved land use. Without the metro district, the applicant would be restricted to the development of residential property only, which is, was originally contemplated. As such, we believe the intention to circum, uh, circumvent a legally binding agreement by the way of metro district. Arrowhead Golf Course stands with Roxborough Foundation in urging the Commissioners to deny, um, the metro district application. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments.
Commissioners, Kathleen Jackson, J-A-C-K-S-O-N, president of the Roxborough Park Foundation's Board of Directors. I live in the community and I speak today as a resident. The foundation contends that a metropolitan district is inappropriate and unlawful for a proposed single-use commercial development consisting of only one property and one owner. One, general obligation debt cannot be issued for improvements servicing a privately-owned facility on a privately-owned property. The applicant would control the Board of Directors indefinitely with no members of the public involved. What is the public purpose of the proposed water, sewer, and street improvements that benefit this single property and single owner? Approval of a service plan for a use that is not allowed under current zoning and without demonstrated public need sets a poor precedent for the county and tacitly approves the significant PD amendment. A service plan for residential use should not be considered until the lawsuit brought by the applicant against the foundation and the county's decision on the PD amendment are final. The insufficient debt capacity of this proposed district makes one wonder why form a metro district? Pomeroy's two self-serving reasons are use of private placement bonds issued to a developer, Pomeroy, and the use of eminent domain to override county's regulations and the foundation's zoning and land uses of the properties surrounding this parcel. Authorization to use eminent domain for any purpose should be expressly prohibited in any service plan proposed now or in the future for this property. Using eminent domain power would allow the applicant to do an end run around county zoning, land use restrictions, and fifty years of our foundation's work to complete the PD vision and keep our roads private. And why are they rushing this plan before November's election? There's no need to rush to a decision when zoning and development plans have not been approved and countless inconsistencies remain in their proposal. Construction is many months, if not years, away. Approval of a rushed service plan proposing an either-or development scenario with eminent domain authorization is not in the county's or in Roxborough Park community's best interests. The foundation needs the Board of Directors to protect its constituents against the corporate greed of a Canadian hotel developer. Your Planning Commission exposed the weaknesses and inconsistencies of this proposal by a five-to-one motion to deny. This is a damning indication of the merits of this proposal. We trust that our Board of County Commissioners will deny. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Sir, please give us your name. Tell us where you're from.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's David Jones. I live in Roxborough Park of six years, and I have a professional background in architecture and planning, and I'm happy to call Colorado home since nineteen ninety-three, speak today as a resident of Roxborough Park. First of all, I want to establish that I wholeheartedly support the metro district application that is before you today. I also want to underscore that there are many supporters for this project. Today, for this hearing, we have limited our speakers in an effort to stay focused on the metro district topic. I've attended almost every public meeting, focus group, small group discussion, and HOA meetings on Pomeroy. I have asked Pomeroy questions and learned everything I can about both the residential and the Nordic spa, or the Nordic spa development. I've gone door-to-door to neighbors and have had countless discussions about the proposed development. Here are some points I want to share. I live on the west side of the golf course backing to hole seventeen and across from the homestead parcel. I support the Nordic spa, but I will save that testimony for another day. I understand that public infrastructure and utilities must be developed for either the residential or Nordic spa scenario. I embrace that a development is proposing to pay their own way and build the public infrastructure that is required. My community has existing challenges. Pomeroy has constantly engaged, or consistently, apologize, consistently engaged our neighbors and the Roxborough Foundation on how to help solve and improve the existing challenges. Today, you will or have already heard about fire mitigation, water, traffic, and security, all issues that can and will be addressed by public infrastructure. The good news is that we, as neighbors, don't have to pay for these improvements, and the benefit is provided to everyone living in Roxborough Park. Remarkably, you hear questions today about whether the metro district should have eminent domain. Well, here's what my HOA is doing to Pomeroy, and see if this sounds familiar. The foundation is using their full powers to control the right-ofways, control access to a parcel that has already been planned for development. Orphaning a property, limit water service, limit sanitary service, and limit roadways to a parcel in the heart of the community. Let's establish some balance to this process and require that everyone follows the rules together.
Mr. Jones, I do need you to wrap up, please.
What's that?
I do need you to wrap up, please.
Yes, please. I am all for improvements. I am all for neighborhood amenities and all for having more open space. I fully support a metro district on the Pomeroy site because that is what is planned. I'd like to note that if, if Arrowhead Golf Club or my Roxborough neighborhood were built today, it too would be financed and developed through a metro district. That is how Colorado works and how infrastructure gets financed. Please enforce the rules, make the developer pay their own way, and approve the community. We support the metro district. I recommend approving the applicant's...
Sorry, do you need you to wrap up, please?
...Pomeroy submission of the metro district. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Jolynn Holswort. Ma'am, come on forward. Give us your name for the record and tell us where you're from.
Hi, I'm Jolynn Holswort, and I'm a seven-year resident of Roxborough Park. I am reading on behalf of Jeff Baumstad, who is a fifteen-year resident of Roxborough Park. The service plan for Arrowhead, Colorado Metro District raises significant concerns regarding the proposed Nordic spa and its impact on the community. Here's a summary. Financial need: What's the need? Pomeroy spent three hundred and seventy-five million dollars on hotel development projects over the last ten years. They don't need the money. It's eminent domain that they're after. Commercial scope: Nordic spa. The service plan, page eleven, indicates a daytime customer population of one hundred fifteen, but the applicant's PowerPoint, page one fifty-three, projects two hundred and forty thousand customers annually, six hundred and fifty-seven daily. Page one fifty-one shows two hundred parking space, two hundred and sixty-five parking spaces. Why? Traffic impact: The increase in traffic would necessitate modifications to Sundown Trail, owned by Roxborough Park Homeowners Association, which opposes such changes. They also need commercial access across Arrowhead Golf Course. Both lead to their need for eminent domain, pages twelve and one sixty. Enhanced streetscaping: Page fifty-eight, exhibit G5, is interpreted as widening and encroachment on established residential properties. This was omitted in Marcus Pakner's presentation at the August Planning Meeting. Clarification needed: I urge the Board of County Commissioners to seek greater clarification before considering this metro district request. Residential scope: Residential units: Page eleven of the service plan indicates thirty-one residential units, eight on the east, twenty-three on the west, with a population of ninety-three. The PD is already approved for residential use, not commercial. Traffic impact: The eight residential units on the east side with a population of twenty-four would not require modifications to Sundown Trail, thus no need for eminent domain. Compliance and community impact: Douglas County Comprehensive Master Plan aims to preserve historic and natural wonders. The Nordic spa is seen as detrimental to the three hundred million-year-old rock formations. Best interest of the area: Would this metro district really serve the best interest of the area, particularly the golf course and one thousand-plus surrounding residences? A Roxborough Park HOA town hall vote showed ninety-six point eight percent opposition to the commercial development. Conclusion: Duty of elected officials: The Board, the Board of County Planners voted five-to-one against this metro district. I urge you to uphold their recommendation and reject the metro district as well. This would meet the needs and desires of your constituents over a single for-profit Canadian company. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Um, folks, we're gonna take a quick break here at the dais and have a quick administrative conference among the Commissioners. Hey, folks, we need to do a little shuffle of the schedule here. So we are going to pause Agenda Item F, Arrowhead, Colorado Metropolitan District Service. Take a moment, and I am going to kick it to Kurt Wykanon to discuss Item G. Kurt, we have a request from the applicant of Item G, County Line Storage Plan Development rezoning.
Yes, due to the public, the length of tonight's public hearing, they would be okay with the continuance to October 8th at 2:30 p.m.
Okay. Board, are we okay with doing that continuation?
I am.
Do we have a motion to continue?
I'll make the full motion if you'd like.
Proceed.
I have a motion to continue the County Line Storage Plan Development rezoning, project file ZR 2021-004, until October 4th, I'm sorry, October 8th at 2:30 p.m.
I'll second that. All right. There's a motion, a second to continue. Any discussion?
I appreciate the applicant being willing to do this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. County Line Storage Plan Development rezoning continued to October 8th. All right. Folks, Commissioner Layden does have to leave. He will join in a few moments remote so that we can have the full board. We do have the consent of the applicant to proceed, and we will proceed. Commissioner, any comments?
I do. I deeply respect and appreciate every single member of the public that is here. I just logged in virtually, and I will be participating virtually from this point forward.
Okay. Commissioner, you are excused from in-person and authorized for remote connect.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Spinning chairs, making a Disneyland exercise up here. All right. Let's get back to it. Next person that I have on the list returning, hang on, returning to Arrowhead, Colorado Metropolitan District Service Plan public comment, I have Wally Holzwerth. Sir, come on forward. Give us your name for the record and tell us where you're from.
My name is Wally Holzwerth. I've lived in Roxborough Park for seven years. My home abuts sundown. We chose this community over many others to enjoy our retirement due to its natural beauty and peaceful setting. I'm going to limit my remarks to only three points tonight. First, the process and experience with Pomeroy has not been clear or forthright from the beginning. Pomeroy's attitude and disrespect for the residents was evident early on when, on November 29, at a town hall meeting, Ryan Pomeroy, CEO, told us, quote, "This parcel is going to be developed as commercial, and we are the best option you can hope for," close quote. And again, quote, "We are hotel owners, not developers," close quote. Pomeroy asks us to trust their intentions, yet the traffic study, replete with data manipulation, and the carefully selected focus groups excluding those most impacted, were but only two of many attempts to produce predetermined outcomes. Second, the impact on our lives, environment, safety, security, and personal financial position would be permanent and devastating. Pomeroy came into our lives uninvited to take precious land and imperil wildlife we cherish with no regard for or effort to learn our history and values purely for profit from a commercial enterprise we don't want or need. Financially, the entire neighborhood would expect to see potentially reduced insurance markets and certainly higher insurance premiums due to an increase in hazard such as higher traffic, increased density, the safety nightmare should a fire occur during peak season, and a commercial enterprise in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Critically, there has been no detailed plan presented to all residents that would address all our security concerns. And third, the scheme to become a Metro District is part of a transparent effort to overturn our residential zoning and apply eminent domain to take our infrastructure. This from a company that brags about $375 million in its development business. There is overwhelming neighborhood opposition to this proposal, and I ask the commissioners to carefully review our objections. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Bob Byrne. Bob Byrne, thank you, sir. Come on forward. Sir, do give us your name for the record and tell us where you're from.
Bob Byrne, B-Y-R-N-E. I'm Chair of the Roxborough Park Fire Mitigation Committee. What do Alexander Mountain, Stone Canyon, Quarry, Clear Creek Canyon, Lockheed Martin, Ten Car Valley, foothills treatment plant, and pearl fires have in common with Roxborough Park? All are wildland urban intervillage zones where human habitation meets wildland vegetation. This is the Colorado State Forest Service wildfire risk map for Roxborough Park. Miraculously, in its 50 years, wildfire has threatened but not scarred Roxborough Park. Since 2009, in the state of Colorado, there have been 10,849 wildfires. 1,612 have been in Douglas County. Douglas County represents 8/10 of 1% of the landmass of Colorado, yet we've experienced 15% of the wildfires here. The evacuations, on June 25, 2022, three Colorado media outlets published non-survivable evacuation routes threaten some of Colorado's most wildfire-prone areas. Those areas were Woodland Park, Evergreen, and Roxborough Park. The evacuation simulation used by the authors indicates some loss of life, and we confirmed it with our own evacuation modeling. We remind you the applicant has failed to resolve ingress and egress on Sundown Trail for a spa in their PD application. By allowing a Metro District, you will be giving the power of eminent domain to a foreign company to use against Douglas County residents. By, and, yeah, resulting, but not just that, but with life-threatening consequences. We suggest the following solution. Douglas County initiates eminent domain action to condemn the property as a threat to the life and safety of over 3,000 Roxborough Park residents. Funds from Douglas County Open Space compensate the applicant and place the property in the open space inventory. We dedicate the 18 water taps that come with the property for firefighting solutions such as a fire suppression pond for refilling Hellattack and Firehawk helicopters in our Hanny Park, or a wet fire break using mortar cannons in the south, which would give residents more time to evacuate, protect our $1.2 billion at home, keep firefighters from entrapment in those narrow cul-de-sacs. Please deny this application and use eminent domain to protect us by condemning this property. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Mary Ann Byrne.
Good evening. I'm Mary Ann Byrne. I'm a retired professor of business and economics and a former claim manager for the Prudential Property and Casualty Company, their Mideast region. I'm here to refute the applicant's contention that they satisfy requirements number one and nine particularly, and I'll relate four points regarding the insurability crisis that we're facing. First, bank rate currently ranks Colorado homeowners' insurance as eighth highest in the country. That's after all the hurricane states. Our average 2024 increase in Colorado homeowner insurance was 17.4%. Our own survey of Roxborough Park residents revealed that our average premiums were 39.6% higher than the Colorado average. Some reported premium increases of 200%, including our own. Moreover, 20% of respondents said that they were dropped by their carriers upon renewals. Some of those companies that refused to renew include Nationwide, Allstate, State Farm, Progressive, Liberty Mutual, Safeco. Okay, two. How does Colorado risk compared to California, which has seen a 774% increase in policy non-renewals this year alone? Carol Walker of Rocky Mountain Insurance Information Association says, "We truly are at a tipping point. Colorado ranks second after California for risk of wildfire." So, expect significant and increasing non-renewals that we're going to be facing. The risk trend increases. Third, First Street Data is a research firm that advises commercial and residential developers, investors, banks, insurers, and communities. Their website says that they relate risks by leveraging their advanced science and engineering approaches to quantify and communicate risk of fire, air, and so forth for every property in the country. So this is the First Street Data map that shows Roxborough Park and the surrounding communities of Sterling Ranch, Roxborough Village, and Ravenna. What's significant about that map is that it shows this dark brown, and that is the fifth highest, the highest, second highest rating from First Street Data in the risk. So Roxborough Park is already at severe rating. If we put the homestead developed, that'll automatically become a severe risk. But the thing is, there's a section in here, down at the south end of our development, that is rated beyond severe. It's extreme.
Ma'am, please do wrap up your comments.
Okay. So what is best for the, in the best interest of our area to be served? Is it to increase our risk? Or if you allow this development, you will be allowing increased risk to our residents who are, after all, Douglas County constituents? Thank you very respectfully. Thank you for your help.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments. Linda Booth, please.
Ma'am, please give us your name for the record and tell us where you're from.
Hi, I'm Linda Booth, B-O-O-T-H. I am a retired teacher, musician. I'm also retired firefighter and volunteer paramedic. I want to talk about air control, air quality. Air quality is becoming a greater and greater issue for Roxborough Park as wildfires burn and development adds more and more residential and commercial activity around our community. Roxborough Park has worse air quality than 68% of cities in Colorado. The EPA sets standards for areas based on whether their air quality meets or exceeds the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, showing regions where pollution levels are safe for people and the environment. The EPA currently designates Roxborough Park as not meeting standards for ozone. Warmer and drier conditions promote the formation of ground-levels ozone and result in larger, more frequent wildfires in wilderness areas, producing particulate matter that can travel thousands of miles and affect air quality across the country and into our area. And this map is Roxborough Park. The circle is the proposed development. You can see this is all air risk of bad air, and they're right in the middle of it. Thank you. The American Lung Association grade for Douglas County high ozone days is F. With massive wildfires burning in Canada, California, Colorado, and our neighboring states, we are seeing more and more days where visibility is impaired, smoke is palpable, and we are alerted to stay indoors. This picture, when I first saw it, I thought, where's the blue sky? There's no blue sky. It's a picture of Ramparts Range Road leading into Roxborough Park. It was taken on July 22nd. Unfortunately, our skies look more like this more and more often from all of the smoke coming in from either Colorado or our neighboring states or Canada. It seems paradoxical that a spa purported to be, quote, "centered around an exhilarating restoration of body, mind, and soul," end quote, would risk locating in such an area where air quality can impact optimal customer experience. Will Denverites want to drive across town to sit in pools that share the same area that they wish to escape, ironically tainted with the smell and particulates from wildfires in Canada? We urge you to deny both the Metro District plan development of either the residential or the spa. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments. Sir, come on forward. Please give us your name for the record and tell us where you're from.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Herb Livingston, spelled L-I-V-I-N-G-S-T-O-N. I'm a former president and six-year veteran on the Roxborough Board of Directors, and I've lived in the Roxborough Park Foundation community for 23 years. You have heard prior testimony regarding the creation and 27-year existence of the former Roxborough Park Metropolitan District. A service plan was approved because there were no services or infrastructure for miles around. The original 3,200 acres designated for the PD was raw, natural Colorado wildland with some pastures for grazing. The only infrastructure, if you can call it that, were six wells. Only water, sewer, and fire protection were provided by the Metro District. All other services were to be furnished by the developer, including costs. As the Commissioners have made aware, consent for overlapping service for water and sanitation was required per state statute by the Board of Roxborough Water and Sanitation District. Roxwater denied consent, so the applicant has removed this service from their service plan as a workaround. Revised service plans and memorandums have been uploaded to the project file, and all this happened yesterday. As such, and aside from the last-minute nat nature of this proposal, I'm having difficulty understanding the need for this Metro District at all. For water, service will be provided by Roxborough Water and Sand District. Sewer service will be provided also by RWSD. And fire protection service will be provided by West Metro. In other words, the same services that are provided for Roxborough Park Foundation and the Roxborough Park Metropolitan District no longer exist. This will not be a service district. It is just a financing tool, coin funding mechanism. Well, this funding mechanism is a facade. Supposedly, they need a Metro District to fund $4 million of infrastructure. However, according to BBC Research and Consultant, once the 35,000 square feet of Nordic Spa and all its, its amenities have been built. Upon completion, the commercial development is anticipated to have a statutory actual value of $45 million. So the developer cannot come up with $4 million to fund infrastructure, but will be able to find enough money to build something worth $45 million. The rationale for a service district is flawed, and there is no need. I recommend deny. I recommend deny. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Cindy Livingston, please. Ma'am, please give us your name for the record and tell us where you're from.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Cindy Livingston, L-I-V-I-N-G-S-T-O-N. I'm a former president and six-year veteran of the Roxboro Park Board of Directors. I've lived in Roxboro Park Foundation community for 23 years. I attended the informational meeting that Arrowhead Colorado Prop Co. LLC held Monday, September 16th. During the breakout session, I listened to and spoke with Megan Becker, their attorney for special district legal matters. At that time, she stated that there would be no need to expand beyond the 35 acres in regard to the creation of the Metro District. She artfully dodged the question of what their proposed Metro District would do in regard to the usage of eminent domain. She stated that Arrowhead Colorado Prop Co. just wants to, quote, "improve what is now existing," end quote, and be, end quote, "enhancement to the community," end quote. Their service plan for streetscaping states that there would be at least six gates in a community that currently has no gates. At the present time, we have an entry station with a 24/7 security guard at the entrance to our community. Additionally, they are proposing to move that existing community's entry station to beyond Sundown Trail. Commissioners, I respectfully ask that you ask, I respectfully request that you ask the applicant how building that many gates and moving the current entry station is an enhancement to the community. I recommend deny. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Greg Watanabe, please. Greg Watanabe. And not seen. Ephraim Glass, please. Ephraim, you're no stranger to the board, but if you could please give your name for the record and tell us where you're from, sir.
So I'm Ephraim Glass, G-L-A-S-S, and I'm on the Roxboro Village Metro District Board. I'm the president, and I'm speaking on behalf of Roxboro Village.
Commissioner, he's speaking on behalf of the village. Let's go ahead and give him. Oh, well done. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks.
Please continue, Ephraim.
I'll stay upfront that the Arrowhead Colorado Metro District application does not directly affect our residents. However, since we are the nearest Metro District, our board felt compelled to speak out on behalf of our residents and others in Douglas County. Approval of this Metro District service plan would set a dangerous precedent that would enable any entity to obtain eminent domain rights and steal property from their rightful owners. Our residents are very concerned about property rights and want to ensure that those rights are protected. There is a difference with the Arrowhead Colorado Metro District application compared with others that clearly shows there's no need for a new Metro District. Within the Arrowhead Colorado Service Plan, it states that they will provide water infrastructure, storm sewer, sanitation, wastewater infrastructure, street improvements, traffic safety protection, parks and recreation, and covenant enforcement and design review. The service plan goes on to say that there are no existing entities that are willing or able to provide these services. However, this is factually incorrect. Between Roxboro Water and Sanitation District and the Roxboro Park Foundation, all of those services are currently provided for all the tracts surrounding the 35-acre parcel in question. Roxboro Village, located less than half a mile away, provides ample parks and recreation facilities as well. Pursuant to Colorado revised statutes, Title 32 does not allow Metro Districts to be formed in areas where existing entities provide the same services. For this reason, we believe there is no basis for the establishment of a Metro District in this case. Now, I need to note that because the Arrowhead Colorado Service Plan still lists water and wastewater infrastructure as powers of the proposed Metro District, even if it plans on turning everything over to Roxboro Water, Roxboro Water still must approve of the amended service plan because those powers are still listed in order to proceed pursuant to Title 32. I'll refer that to Jeff on the legal stuff. I'd recommend asking him whether that you can actually approve it without Roxboro Water approving the amended plan. Now, we think it's important to provide some background about the commercial entity submitting this service plan application. They initially attempted to build a Nordic spa in the same tract, but were thwarted when they realized they didn't have the easements necessary to conduct a commercial enterprise. They sued both Douglas County and the Roxboro Park Foundation, as was mentioned earlier, to obtain an easement on private roads the Roxboro Park Foundation owns. The attempt at forming a Metro District appears to be the latest effort to obtain an easement through use of eminent domain. Most Metro Districts are formed to cover large tracts of land with extensive infrastructure needs where a developer would otherwise have difficulty finding financing. The Arrowhead Colorado application is for a tiny tract of land that can't support more than 31 homes. Most developers have no problem obtaining financing for small tracts like this, so it's doubtful that access to Metro District financing is needed in this case. In fact, development has occurred in the same neighborhood without the creation of a new government entity. Ultimately, this appears to be a case of a foreign company attempting to trample the rights of Douglas County residents by attempting to use eminent domain for commercial gain. We strongly advise the board to reject this application to protect our property rights. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Tim Noss. Sir, please come forward. Give us your name. Tell us where you're from.
I'm Tim Canaus, K-N-A-U-S. I'm a Vietnam veteran, and I'm a resident of Roxboro Park Foundation. The goal of Colorado's metropolitan districts is to create critical public services and infrastructure, usually in a residential development. Creating a Metro District is creating a government entity with taxing authority and the ability to issue low-cost, tax-free bonds. It is simply wrong to do this for a single for-profit business that will find little demand from the immediate community. This corrupts Colorado's 500-page Title 32 Special District Act to benefit one company and a small group of people who will own the business, run the government entity, and most likely own some of the bonds. Two, the 35-acre parcel is already surrounded by an existing 1,000-acre government entity, that's Roxboro Park Foundation Homeowners Association, which, as we already heard, includes the Arrowhead Golf Course. Common sense dictates that development of this small parcel should ultimately be absorbed by the much larger foundation to provide the needed residential services and preserve the look of the area. This has been done successfully with a number of parcels. The Colorado Home Builders Association projects $30,000 to $40,000 infrastructure investment per lot. The proposed service plan describes $132,000 investment per housing unit. This is a very expensive-to-develop site that is not economical and will be especially vulnerable should the housing market crater during construction and sales. This is before land construction and planning costs. I suggest this housing option really is a lousy returning project, and Pomeroy is including it to turn the west side of RPF against the east side, and we've heard a little bit about that. Fourth, Section 9 of the service plan does not anticipate any agreement with Roxboro Park Foundation or Arrowhead Golf Course. That makes no sense. You've seen the site. This 35-acre parcel is in the middle of the golf course. The golf course is completely surrounded by our 1,000 homes and 1,200 acres comprising the foundation. When Ryan Pomeroy and his entourage first came to Roxboro two years ago, he claimed that he was at the top of the food chain, and he could do what he wanted. However, the top of the food chain has a political dimension, and that's you. We urge you to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Sir, come on forward. Give us your name. Tell us where you're from.
Kenneth Fountain, 10612 Moss Rock Run. Good afternoon. I want to first thank you for your service. There is no greater honor to be than to be selected to carry out the will of the people. And as you can see, there's a lot of willful people that are adamantly against Pomeroy's project. And Mr. Layton said it best earlier when he said that Roxboro Park is a place, or Douglas County is a place, where quality of people, quality of life comes first, so please hear me. We own the property at 10612 Moss Rock Run, which we bought in 2020. Previously, we lived on Snow Cloud Trail. It's my retirement home. It's everything I own. Tired up into this. We're absolutely outraged that this Canadian company wants to come in and change the lifestyle of such a well-established public community for Ryan Pomeroy's personal gain. We are here because they talk, great talk about community on their website, but the words are obviously not true. He's turned down, under, he was turned down under the traditional methods of, so his commanding business practices follows here today. I learned a lot about planning zoning meeting last month that I was unaware of during my 30-plus-year career of government and public service. I've also learned that you must consider seven criteria in evaluating service plan, which we have before us, so it's not, the slide I had was seven. So let's just quickly say no to these. The funny thing to me is he is trying to pitch this as a community improvement to a majority of the community that want a beautiful scenery untouched, the golden silence and the peace to remain and enjoy the natural beauty that we all invested dearly in. We all brought, we all bought here for that reason, and it did not include a Nordic spa. Also, Mr. Pockner alluded to Pomeroy's needing the money for its infrastructure, but yet their website boasts how they've developed over $375 million in new development projects over the past 10 years. Seems to be another misrepresentation of facts. We invested in this community starting in 2017 and proud to be members. You are elected members of our county commission and expected to protect the interests of your constituents, which Pomeroy is not one of them. This does not include opening our private community to Metro, to a Metro District with 240,000 potential visitors in our 11 homes sanctuary. This whole farce is based upon this Canadian man's desire to put his Nordic spa in the middle of, and attempting to use this angle of approach. While it may be called trued by some, I would say it's conniving, underhanded, dishonest, manipulative, and there are the better adjectives for his efforts. You are elected to protect our interest and our investment. We are asking you to do just that today, bear yet, I am begging you to do that today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments.
Hi, I'm Alexandra Fountain. I'm a resident of Roxboro Park since 2017. It was my dream come true to move there for the place that it is. Is being the key word. I'm also a dedicated volunteer at Roxboro State Park next door to our community. I advocate preservation of our community as a residential community. I concur with all that's been said before with the other members in rejection of the applicant's proposals. I believe Pomeroy Lodging has set his sights on building his hydro spa in Roxboro Park to the point of doing anything necessary to get what he wants for the purpose of personal greed and for his Canadian company. That is to include this Metro District angle. He has no footprint in Douglas County or in Roxboro Park, and he does not understand or care what he's going to ruin for all of us by moving forward with these plans and forcing that all upon us. The majority of us who live there have chosen to spend our entire life savings for serenity, peace, security, nature, quiet, beautiful rocks, wildlife, and dark skies at night. We leave the world behind when we go home. There are very few places to find such a community. There is nothing about a special Metro District or public spa that is congruent with the lifestyle and culture of our community. There is no benefit to the existing residents. The land is zoned for a limited residential, and nothing's changed except for one company's corporate and one man's personal agenda. He knew what he bought when he bought it, and it should remain that. There's no need for a special Metro District. It is already supported as it is. Criteria number nine regarding best interests of the area to be served is clearly not met as you can see by all of us here today. This is pure manipulation to advance the Nordic spa and use of eminent domain to take what they cannot get otherwise. Imagine if someone came into your neighborhood, bringing everything you moved there to get away from. How would you want your Commissioners to vote? Would you want tourism in your neighborhood? I personally don't dislike growth, but I chose my forever home in a community that exists the way it does and the way it was originally planned. Growth can happen elsewhere. Maybe some of the communities that have the people here that are in favor, maybe they should go there. So I ask you to please deny, and I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments. Michael Owen, Owens.
Mitchell Owens.
Pardon me. Mr. Owens, please tell us where you're from. Give us your name for the record. Tell us where you're from.
Sure. Mitchell Owens, O-W-E-N-S. I am a Roxboro Park resident in progress. Groundbreaking was three weeks ago, so it's very important to me. I would like to start by stating my opposition to the creation of a Metro District as proposed for this meeting for a number of reasons. Increased track, traffic, unmanageable given the spa traffic projections, and a limited, constrained community access route. If anybody has ever seen Roxboro Park, the road that leads into Roxboro Park and to the regular park, two lanes at most, taking extra work to improve that area, you'd need a minimum of two lanes in each side, four lanes, and you have hillsides and rocks formations just at the entryway, making it very difficult to get in and out of that area. Increased danger for fire evacuation. Limited narrow evacuation routes with higher traffic and increased evacuation times resulting in increased danger to residents and public. Light pollution and wildlife disruption. Not what we signed up for when we bought into the community. We bought into the nature and the environment. However, my greatest concern is the subject of Pomeroy Arrowhead Colorado Metropolitan District wishes to sweep under the rug eminent domain, as in their slide, in parentheses, "limited use." There's no such thing as limited use. This action by Metro Districts has historically been abused time and again, not all Metro Districts, but the few that stand out. It's horrendous. As it stands under Colorado law, eminent domain can be used for public benefit, but is not supposed to be allowed for private or commercial gain, as has been shown in the court system and the Colorado Supreme Court. This restriction can easily be overruled. My solution to prevent this from happening is to not give a corporate entity through a proxy quasi-government entity or individual the power to disrupt and disregard the wishes of the non-represented, represented families and homeowners. Do not give them the power to destroy our community. Reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Jackie Meyer. I'm pretty sure it's Meyer. Awesome. Ma'am, please come forward. Give us your name for the record. Tell us where you're from.
My name is Jackie Meyer, M-E-Y-E-R, and I'm a homeowner in the Roxboro Park Foundation HOA community. Please do not approve this request. Instead, adhere to the Douglas County's vision of the Comprehensive Master Plan, which states, balances the common values, rights, and needs of all county rights, and needs of all county residents and landowners, and honors and protects its unique diverse community and resources. I am a retired marketing executive from Fortune 500 companies, and having built and rebuilt organizations in my profession, I found it imperative to always challenge decisions to ensure that they aligned with my organization's vision, because vision statements are designed to function as a divining rod. They help lead you to decisions by providing a roadmap to adhere to the values and long-term goals of our community in this case. The comprehensive master plan states, to balance the common values of all residents, therefore balance your decision to not approve, as metro district objectives are designed for large community housing, and more importantly, more affordable housing. Balance your decision by not approving for a potential Nordic spa commercial enterprise, as metro district objectives are to support new community infrastructure, not Nordic spas. Balance your decision to honor and protect our unique diverse community and resources by not disturbing 300-million-year-old fountain formation red rocks that are an extension of the red rocks within Roxborough State Park, and not to mention the wildlife habitat. Balance your decision and consider partnering with our community and GOCO, Great Outdoors Colorado, to buy the property from the Canadian developer and establish a conservation easement with Douglas Land Conservancy and promote your adherence to the master plan vision to protect this unique community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments. Bridget Epp? Ma'am, come on forward. Give us your name for the record. Tell us where you're from.
Hi, my name's Bridget Epp, and my last name is spelled E-P-P. I live in Roxborough Park. I've been there for about eight years. Good afternoon, commissioners. Good evening. It's getting later. I'll make this quick. Please don't approve this request for a metro district. Jackie just made a really good point. She has a solution for Douglas County and Pomeroy, which includes a tax credit, but we can talk about that later. Put it into a conservation easement. I'm trying to kind of give you the long view here, that there are solutions beyond the metro district. But while we're on that subject, take a look at number nine. We don't want you to approve it because it really isn't in the best interests of the people. I'm the co-chair of Save Our Rocks, and I'm speaking on behalf of nearly 1,000 members of Save Our Rocks. This is a significant number of people. Your constituents in Douglas County have joined together over the last three and a half years, and they're opposed to the metro district. They're fearful of it. They see it as a threat. And the commercial spas, well. As you know, it's a beautiful place, those rocks, and I just want to remind you that that is, that parcel, and this is what I want you to think about, this isn't like any other place that has ever been asked to be a metro district in Colorado. These 35 acres are the last untouched piece of the ancestral Rockies. That's it. They're not making any more of it. We can't grow new trees. We can't help the wetlands be better. No, this is these priceless, unique red rocks. This place is so unique. A metro district is no place for that. Sarah Follen will be coming up and speaking in a moment on the geological significance of these red rocks. I also want to say, take a look, Kirk Johnson. That name may be known to you. He's the former, he's a former Denver resident, the head of the Nature and Science Museum, and now the director of the Smithsonian. Kirk Johnson is the one who did the special in 2015 that was on Nova, and in that special, he is there right in front of this parcel, and he talks about how precious it is. So we do ask you to not approve because of number nine. The district is not in the best interests of the people here, and the 1,000 members of Save Our Rocks thank you. We know that this is your duty as Douglas County commissioners to hear us, and we do appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Eric Clemmer, please. Eric Clemmer? All right, not seen. Mary Dalibeta? Ma'am, come on forward. Give us your name. Tell us where you're from.
You'll have to excuse my poor writing. My name is Mary Dalibeta. My last name is two words. It's spelled D as in David, A-L-L-A, space, capital B as in boy, E-T-T-A. Pardon me. I'm a retired CFO, and I have lived in Roxborough Park for 13 years. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today on this critical issue. I concur with all of the objections and concerns that have been presented to you, and I absolutely recommend the denial of Pomeroy's application for a metro district. You have heard undeniable testimony from our board of directors, our community manager, and many residents as to why this application should be denied. More than, pardon me, more than 96.8 of our members are opposed to this application, given that you have already heard the details demonstrating overwhelming opposition and convincing arguments as to why this application should not be approved. I will explain my personal reasons for requesting denial. My husband and I moved here 13 years ago after searching for three years for a perfect retirement home. We live on Woodbine Court, and the rear of our property backs up to the Ninth Green on Arrowhead Golf Course. We purposely chose this home so we could be surrounded by nature, enjoy the view of the beautiful red rocks, a view that would never be obstructed, and most certainly not by a huge commercial business. The land where Pomeroy would build their 30,000-foot monstrosity, including a parking lot for 265 cars. Our land is downhill from this property. Consequently, the lights from their parking lot will shine into our windows from dusk to dawn. We currently enjoy dark skies from dusk to dawn. My husband and I, along with our 58 neighbors that live on the satellite streets of Sundown Trail, will have our quality of life destroyed if you approve this application. We will be subjected to nonstop traffic, noise, and constant disruption. The applicant is hoping they will have a projected annual patronage of 170,000 to 240,000 visitors. The irony is what they think they are offering to their customers, enjoying a few hours in the center of our community and enjoying nature, will be destroyed from all of our residents. Imagine that this was your neighborhood. Surely, you would not want a huge commercial development in the middle of it. Please, please, on behalf of all of the residents of Roxborough Park Foundation, many of whom are your constituents, please deny this application. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments. Michael Block, please. Michael Block? Not seen. Tammy Berbavick? All right, ma'am. Please state your name for the record and tell us where you're from.
My name is Tammy Berberick. That's B-E-R-B-E-R-I-C-K. I'm a Roxborough Park resident. I'm a CEO of a Colorado company. I'm also a 20-year executive of Molson Coors. I understand economic development. Economic development that makes sense. I stand today in opposition to the proposed metro district. I urge you, with respect, to listen to your neighbors and listen to your planning commission and vote no. Vote no on this metro district because it simply does not make sense. It is not needed. Number one. First, this project isn't large enough to warrant a metro district. It only involves 31 homes or a single for-profit business, and it's redundant because our community already has the essential services in place: water, sanitation, fire protection, and access to recreational facilities provided by a nearby, thank you, thank your effort, a nearby metro district funded through open space grants. That's number two. Furthermore, the land used for this project hasn't even been determined or approved, so there's no pressing urgency. There's been a lot of questions, I think, Commissioner Teal, you even said that yourself, about traffic and about parking, about the noise. We don't know the answers to these questions. So there's, what's the pressing urgency without understanding the whole picture? Why establish a taxing district for a project that hasn't been fully vetted or finalized? Why? To gain taxing and bonding authority, and most concerning of all, the power to use eminent domain. This would grant them the ability to seize property, all while city and county officials lose oversight over our tax dollars, as highlighted previously in the Denver Post. Commissioners Layden? Not here. Commissioners Teal and Commissioners Thomas. You've expressed your commitment to responsible governance and fiscal stewardship. Please uphold these values. Don't hand over authority to developers, especially a foreign-based company. Vote no, based on number one, based on number two, and based on number nine. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments. Dan Berberick? Sir, come on forward. Give us your name for the record and tell us where you're from.
Yeah, my name is Dan Berberick, and I'm a 64-year resident of Colorado and then a four-year resident of Roxborough Park. The discussion today is a mix of statements about the metro district, as well as a couple of vaguely presented and mostly unspecified development plans. Most of our concern and discussion is about the bigger picture of those proposed developments. The metro district is a piece of that. It'd be easy to dismiss the concerns of the development because, you know, that we're bringing up because we're talking about a metro district, but it's much more than a metro district. It's the big plan. And their plan is very simple, and they presented it last week. It's to build a spa on a 34-acre piece of ground that's surrounded by Arrowhead fairways, and the only public infrastructure I could gather was to get to that spa, about 140-yard street that would go beyond the golf course. So I'm not seeing the public infrastructure that goes into the argument of a metro district. Pomeroy purchased this January 31 of this year. Prior to that, what sounds like about two years of extended diligence, and it sounds like much more than diligence, to the point where they're making claims that they were orphaned. And, you know, they had no property rights in those discussions that they entered into. So I don't quite follow the plan here, but two weeks after they purchased it, they sued Douglas County, right here, and as well as Roxborough Parks. There was little or no negotiations as owners to present what they were doing. You know, so the answer is they had no discussions as owners. They launched the lawsuit right in front of Jefferson County, or Douglas County, who they're now in front of trying to get approval of a ridiculous metro district located on rugged, outcropped, covered piece of ground in the middle of a golf course. I mean, the big picture is, you know, this could have been, you know, Castle Pines. You know, find some residential properties that you can buy and put some commercial properties in between them. And as it was specked when they bought it, it was a residential development, and it's become very obvious that that's not their plan. They've got no history of doing that. They've got motels and a couple of spas. So I'm not seeing this residential piece that they actually understood it to be when they purchased it. It doesn't seem to really fit the bill. So what I, you know, the same setting exists from Garden of the Gods to the Flatirons in Boulder, and it's always been preserved and reserved for, you know, for the most part, residential communities and not commercial properties. In fact, if you look at Garden of the Gods, they moved all the commercial stuff out of there and put it east of the hogback. So, anyway, bottom line is what I'm recommending is denial of this metro district. All I see is 140 yards worth of public infrastructure and no reason to give them, you know, authority for taxation or eminent domain. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Loma Swett? Ma'am, come on forward. Give us your name. Tell us where you're from.
I can't believe you pronounced it correctly.
Ah, you know, I can't believe I pronounced it correctly.
I'm going to spell both names. L-O-M-A-S-W-E-T-T. Well done. Good evening. I live in Roxborough Park with my husband. We are both retired. We relocated from Akron, Ohio, a year ago. So we are, like Mr. Owens, pretty new, pretty new to the neighborhood. Want to thank you two here and one virtually for listening to our concerns and our objections. When we moved here, we did so to placate our daughter. Our oldest daughter lives in Littleton. She's got the three oldest grandchildren. She said, "I don't want to break your house down when you get too old in Ohio." So we moved. We thought, and this is an expression that some Canadians might recognize, because a friend of ours who's Canadian has used it, and we love it. At our age, this will do us out. And so we expected and believed, and still do, that this house would be our final house that we went on. We live one house in from Sundown Trail on Dakota Ridge. So it will, the traffic, which is already not insignificant from Arrowhead, but we appreciate it and recognize that, that traffic will become tripled. Based on their estimation of the amount of daily spa goers and parking, there will probably be three times as much traffic down that street. We knew what we saw when we bought, but we didn't appreciate what could be if this metro district was put into place. I could say a lot of things, and many of them have already been said, but what I'd like to say is that we, the majority of the residents in our neighborhood, would respectfully request that you all deny this proposal. And 25 seconds left. I'm a retired attorney. I did billable stuff, billable time, so I have, I've done well by not going beyond the red buzzer. I thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments. Deborah Shatford, please.
Hello. My name is Deborah Shatford, S-H-A-T-F-O-R-D. I am a resident of Roxborough Park, and I want to thank you very much for hearing us today. I'm here to request that you deny, surprise, surprise, the formation of this Arrowhead Metro District, as it does not meet the approval criteria, several of the approval criteria. Metro District as it does not meet the approval criteria, several of the approval criteria. You've heard testimony as to why it may or may not. One thing I would like to bring your attention to is that first bullet, need for service. That actual slide was appearing at the planning commissioners' meeting and that need for services was recognized to be a truncated version of what the actual requirement is. The actual requirement is that sufficient existing and projected need for organized service exists. Once one of the commissioners heard that, he actually changed his vote from a yes to a no. There is no existing need. We're putting the cart before the horse here. We have a commercial application for zoning in place. There is no existing need and it requires existing and projected need. The one area that hasn't been, number four, I would like to address. You haven't heard anything on that today. And I am coming to you as a person who has 40 years, 35 years in financial, in corporate finance, in my capacity as an investment banker in corporate development, and also as chairman of the board of the Pasadena California Angels Investment Group. I am very used to looking at numbers and looking for details and seeing what hangs together or not. The thing that particularly concerns me about number four is that there is absolutely no independent opinion or, or opinion or evaluation, an independent valuation, of the projections for either the sales revenue for the spa or for the projected commercial value of the spa. That apparently that we're saying that this financial ability to discharge the proposed indebtedness is just based on the assumption that only the applicant has provided, that the Hilltop Securities Memo does not address at all the, whether a $19.4 million sales revenue in the very first year is reasonable, it can be expected, we have no idea where that number came from. And also, BCC Consulting on page six of their memo also states specifically that they are not commenting on the valuation of the commercial property. So we cannot, we have no way of knowing in this commercial scenario at least if the, if the district will have the financial ability to discharge the proposed indebtedness. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, Will Shatford, also spelled S-H-A-T-F-O-R-D. I live in Roxborough Park. I've been a resident there for three years. I don't want you to approve this because it's not in compliance with Article One of the Colorado Specific District Act. The proposed purpose is for commercial development by a single individual and it doesn't satisfy the requirements that I think, believe are needed. Further, the applicant has provided documentation of any kind that either demonstrates or provides reasonable assurance of the 2026 sales revenue will be over $19 million. The applicant states that it will be 115 daily customers. To the peak rate charged currently for customers at their Alaskan spa, as published today on their website, is only $129. That would result in only $5.4 million a year in revenue. For them to actually satisfy the $19 million revenue, they would have to charge each of those 115 people coming in $452 to visit the spa. We believe this is a pretty unreasonable amount of money for people to visit the spa. Given the non-compliance and lack of adequate financial projections, I ask you to reject their application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Beth Carterman. Okay, not heard. That's good. I didn't know if I pronounced your name right. Tracy Waller.
Well, that changed.
Well, ma'am, please do give us your name and tell us where you're from.
My name is Tracy Perko, P-E-R-K-O. And I am speaking as a resident of Roxborough Park and live directly on Sundial, or Sundown Trail. And I want to thank you guys for taking the time to listen to all of us. I would like to read something that is, I think, kind of important and it's off of your guys' website. That kind of speaks to a portion of what we all are talking about. It's under stewardship and it reads, "Protecting our historic and natural resources protects our quality of life. High-quality protected natural resources and stewardship of our historic assets. For Douglas County to say, sorry, to say the great place we know and love, quality of life requires the county commissioners' focus on the high quality of our land, air, and water. Protecting our wildlife by protecting our future and being responsible stewards of our history and heritage." I'm sorry, my eyes probably need some glasses. But please deny the application that they are trying to put through. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, come on forward. Give us your name. Tell us where you're from.
My name is Jill Patterson, P-A-T-T-E-R-S-O-N. Good evening, commissioners. I've been a resident of Roxborough Park for eight years and I'm going to take a slightly different approach. Andy Warhol once said, "I think having land and not ruining it is the most beautiful art that anybody could ever want." This proposed metro district and potential commercial development of an adult water park, minus the slides, would create an assault on our community. We have been presented with all the fabricated enhancements the Pomeroy Development would provide to the Roxborough Park Foundation community. In reality, if this metro district were to be approved, it would create jeopardy for safety and irreparably harm the aesthetics, environment, wildlife, resources, financial well-being of the Roxborough Park Foundation. I'm fiercely opposed to the Roxborough Park Metropolitan District proposal and ask the commissioners to be the voice of reason by voting no and not allowing this parcel of exquisite land to be ruined. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Ma'am, please do give us your name and tell us where you're from.
Sarah Folland, F-O-L-A-N-D. I'm an eight-year resident of Roxborough Park. Good evening, commissioners and council. I'm also a nationally certified geologist. You've heard a lot of financial reasons, business reasons, traffic reasons, smoke and smog, but you haven't really heard why the geology of this area is so important. My certification for my national certification is 5327. I hold advanced degrees in geology, geochemistry, and tectonics. For nearly two decades, I worked for an international petroleum exploration company. I'm here today to strongly oppose this application. The basis for my position is the destruction of our neighborhood and the large-scale risk associated with seven identified geo-hazards within the proposed area. The geo-hazards can be divided into two subgroups, surface and subsurface hazards. I will focus strictly on the surface hazards as subsurface hazards are difficult to ascertain. The proposed construction area is located within steeply dipping sandstone and shale outcrops of the 300-million-year-old fountain formation. Identical outcrops occur in four other areas along the Front Range, Garden of the Gods, Roxborough State Park, Red Rocks Amphitheater, and the Flat Irons, each of which is protected for its geologic uniqueness. Given the steep dips in interfaced rock types, these outcrops are inherently unstable and susceptible to failure due to surface processes such as spalling, sheeting, heaving, and unweighting, all of which could cause catastrophic rock failure within the development area and threaten any construction. The most significant and most dangerous surface process I've identified is flooding. Though we live in a high desert and do not experience large annual rain and snowfall, we do experience significant thunderstorms and large winter blizzards which dump huge amounts of precipitation in very short periods of time. Construction within the proposed location would cover the natural drainages with impermeable material, preventing water seeping safely away into the subsurface and therefore creating catastrophic runoff. The development area averages 75 feet higher than the surrounds. Runoff not able to permeate naturally into the subsurface would flow downhill, moving east onto the golf course and potentially flooding the Arrowhead Golf Club, Cloud House, which sits 69 feet below the development area. Runoff to the west would threaten homes along the Willow Brooms Road. As a geologist and given these subsurface and surface geo-hazards, I strongly recommend that the commissioners deny this application. Further, I recommend that the commission consider protecting the area just as the other four fountain areas are protected. Thank you for your attention.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Very much appreciated. Ma'am, come on forward. Please give us your name.
I can't write either. It's Paige, P-A-G-E.
Well, thank you. Tell us where you're from and you may begin.
I am a resident of Roxborough Park. I've been there for 34 years, always been active in the community, was a member of the board for seven years, either as president or treasurer. I want to talk about metro districts. Metro districts theoretically help keep homes more affordable, but in actuality, they just shift the cost from being in addition to the purchase price to being an annual tax assessment that could ultimately far exceed the purchase savings. And these will not be affordable homes. Metro districts are meant for large-scale residential development and I can't imagine the 37 or so townhomes are going to create that required economies of scale. The developer tells us they have very deep pockets and the formation of a metro district for this small of a development should not be a necessity. And giving them power of eminent domain just gives them the authority to come in and take from us the things that those of us in the community have worked for, imagined, developed, built, and paid for for all these years and they want to take them and quote-unquote improve them. Metro districts operate without oversight of voters, without restrictions due to conflicts of interest, and without checks and balances to ensure communities won't become insolvent. Colorado-in-law allows developers to elect themselves to the board of the metro district and to use that position to approve millions of dollars in public financing and can purchase their own public bonds for their own interest. Developers are able to finance before construction and allow them to finance overly ambitious plans that are unrealistic and highly unlikely to be achieved without any fear of liability to themselves. This could result in bankruptcy and damage ultimately to valuable, irreplaceable assets plus damage to the values of our existing homes. The developer has no incentive to create a sustainable development model or to manage their money responsibly. Any consequence will fall on the owners of the residents in their district, not on them. This is not in our best interests. Please do not approve it.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments.
Yeah, my name is Philip Rock, R-O-C-K. I'm a 17-year resident of Roxborough Park. I am here to agree with my fellow residents of Roxborough Park that we do not want or believe that this metro district is truly needed and we please would like you to vote no on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Ma'am, if you could please give us your name and tell us where you're from.
Kathy Hermson, spelled H-E-R-M-S-E-N, also a resident of Roxborough Park. I can go even faster than Phil because I don't have anything additional to comments that have all been made, just simply requesting now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments.
Christine David, D-A-V-I-D, and thank you so much for having us here and letting me make some comments. First, I'd like to say I concur with whatever with the comments and the reasons why my fellow Roxborough Park family is requesting that this metro district be denied. I wanted to give you a little bit of personality of why I think and why I moved to Roxborough. We moved to Roxborough when my daughter was 18 months old. She is now 27. So we live on Roxborough Drive and, no, I'm sorry, we live on Rain Dance, which butts up to Willow Broom. Now, the kids in that area, if they're going to ride a bike, they're going to come up and get on the trail on Roxborough Drive, which you take Rain Dance, Willow Broom, and Roxborough Drive. If they have access through Willow Broom, you're going to have a problem with kids, you're going to have a problem with bikes. People ride bikes, people walk. And also, there is a bus stop right there at Willow Broom and Roxborough Drive. So with the potential of having more traffic to their other side of their property, you're putting our family, our kids, people that enjoy that area at risk. That is personally part of why I believe this should be denied. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments. I'm going to struggle with this next one. Pamela Abdulaziz. Ma'am, please do give us your name and tell us where you're from.
Good evening, board members and neighbors. It's Pamela Abdulaziz, A-B-D-U-L-A-Z-I-Z, and I'm a International Business Development Executive that I stand before you today as one of the over 1,000 residents of Roxborough Park. We live on Rain Dance. Unlike Pomeroy, a private foreign corporation, we are Douglas County citizens that pay local taxes. Pomeroy is a suspicious neighbor with very hostile methods. After suing the HOA and the county, they now seek to obtain a metro district to circumvent zoning and gain dangerous powers such as the power of eminent domain. This would jeopardize surrounding home values, sustainability, and our safety. Pomeroy's land was always intended for residential homes, not a commercial venture. However, excuse me, even their preliminary residential plan raises concerns about safety and environmental impacts for residents and golfers. Perhaps this preliminary plan is a tactic to gain support for the Nordic spa as it intentionally places homes in areas that could significantly disrupt golf course safety and the safety of the community and our visitors. This fear-mongering aligns with Pomeroy's questionable tactics and raises doubts about their commitment to environmental protection and community well-being. Note also that their published plan likely violates Douglas County zoning and land, land use in terms of the golf course as it doesn't describe setback requirements, height restrictions, buffer zones, and design standards to minimize golf balls injuring residents or visitors or property. Pomeroy already has viable residential development options that the community would welcome, such as a subdivision, a planned unit development, a cluster development, or a joint venture with a developer that understands design compatibility with our natural surroundings. Any of these options would also respect the current zoning. These options already have sufficient services to support the development of 18 to 30 homes without the need for a metro district. And any of these options would make Pomeroy a much better neighbor. In summary, a residential plan that serves to alleviate housing shortages in the master plan is a safer and more sustainable option for a community than a Nordic spa. A failed speculative Nordic spa could leave us with tax burden of an abandoned commercial property. A failed Nordic spa also calls into question whether Pomeroy would have the financial ability to discharge their indebtedness on a reasonable basis. I assume that they've also not submitted their financial plans I assume that they've also not submitted their financial plans or their financial statements to the county. I urge you to reject this proposal.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Jan Berger. Jan Berger, please. Oh, come on forward, ma'am. Mr. and Mrs. Berger, I noticed you have it on the same line. Each of you can go three minutes, please. Okay, okay. Not a problem.
Trying to save your time.
Just please remember it's not a tag-team event, so you have three minutes, and please give us your name and where you're from, and please begin.
We are Steve and Jan Berger. That's B-E-R-G-E-R. We are 30-year residents of Roxborough Park. I'm a former board member.
And I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Aging Resources of Douglas County.
We agree with everything said by the Roxborough Park General Manager and our impressively eloquent neighbors. Further, we noted that everyone save one who spoke in favor of this metro district today lives outside Roxborough Park, while all those save one who recommend denial live in and represent the more than 1,000 homeowners and their families who live in Roxborough Park. They are your constituents. With all that in mind, we ask you to deny this metro district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Berger. We appreciate your comments. Linda Jackson.
I need to say you nailed both names.
Hey, hey, hey. Very good. Ma'am, please do give us your name, tell us where you're from.
Linda Jackson, J-A-C-K-S-O-N. I live two houses off of Sundown Trail, next to Tracy, over there. When I was looking to buy in the area, I was told that land was private, and if it was to be built on, it would be homes. So I feel, even though it's not a true sense of the term, I kind of feel like I'm in a potential bait-and-switch situation here, that I thought I was moving into a residential community, but now that street, Sundown Trail, is going to be a main thoroughfare. Is that the right word? Thoroughfare? So that is not what I had expected when I moved in here. I knew the Arrowhead Golf Course was there, of course, and trust me, I can hear every bump-bump of every car, truck, party limo, bus that comes down there and goes over that culvert, and especially the visitors that are coming down there, they always have to pump their brakes and squeal to a stop when they realize they have to go over that culvert. So, small price to pay to live in that area, of course. To see it double, triple, quadrupled, that is very frightening to me. While the spa would initially use seven acres, I learned today that their other two spas are adjacent to other resort properties. So I fear that this is foot the door just to get in and then to take this to the next level and build hotels, other condos, properties, gas stations, whoever knows what goes else in there. In the 1980s, I had the privilege to go through Sedona, Arizona, on a trip, and it was a gorgeous area. I went by there a decade later, and I could not recognize the place. That was another place of beautiful red rocks that were not destroyed, but definitely the community suffered for it. Moving into the fire, I'll echo kind of what Commissioner Layden was saying before he left, that what draws us to this community can also be the detriment to us as well if we do get caught in a fire hazard situation. As I look down Sundown Trail, I try to imagine what it would look like if 246 people from the spa, 200-something people from the golf course, are all trying to get to the quickest exit down Sundown Trail. Even if it was widened, that would become a roadblock with all the people coming down Roxborough Park, trying to get through that narrow entrance by the guard gate. As I look down Sundown Trail, I was kind of taken back to pictures years ago from the Paradise Camp Fire in California and all the burned-out cars on the road leading up there. People died in their cars. I've already got my go-bag, and I think I might sometimes have to take it out on my back instead of driving out on my car because I fear that road might be blocked. So I just want to leave you with that image, that that's a possibility, especially with our crazy wildland fire situations these days. So I thank you for your patience with us and your time, and I request you to deny the proposal.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments. Sandy Berg. Ma'am, please do give us your name for the record and tell us where you're from.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much, commissioners, for hearing us. It is a long night, and I will try not to duplicate. My name is Sandy Berg. I am a homeowner of Roxborough Park for eight years. I am a strategy consultant for a multi-billion-dollar organization, so ideal in facts and logic. Over three years ago, went to an open house where Marcus and others had talked about this spa concept, the Nordic spa, and it's pretty. People have done, I've seen some twisted faces when people are like, "It was pretty. It's pretty." But the concept has not been done in the lower 50 states. There's two, Alaska and Canada. And so as we talked about, we looked at what that might mean, or would that be an advantage to the neighborhood, where most of us, as you've heard, have really come down to the devastating impacts that you've heard over and over again. The fire, the drought, the water capacity, utilization of filling up Nordic spas. I'm assuming they drain them every now and then and have fresh water, so, you know, that's a lot of water to fill up multiple Nordic spas. And so as we've talked and tried to say, you know, this is how we feel, it really hasn't been heard, and a lot of times we hear, "We respect you. We respect you." And here's the interesting thing, is that we, as residents, brought up all of these different thoughts and concerns years ago before they bought the property. And almost as a dig, it was, "We're going to buy that property anyway. We are going to bulldoze our way in. We're to bulldoze our way through those million, multi-million-year sandstone rocks, and we will have our will." It's almost like a foreign country invading a little itty-bitty area. It kind of sounds familiar, doesn't it? And it's really sad because there's plenty of places in Colorado. Why in this one little strip does it have to be here? It doesn't make sense physically. It doesn't make sense geographically. Honest to God, nobody from this neighborhood's going to go because if we like hot tubs, we have our own. So we're not the customers, and so we do worry about the fiscal ability to remain viable. And so I recommend that you deny this metro district. As people have said, they're rushing through it for their timelines, not ours. There's a lot of things that have to be settled, and we know a lot of real estate agents in our neighborhood who could direct you to different properties that could be really successful, and let us continue to keep safe, safety at our forefront. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Scott Berg, please.
And Mr. Chair, I hate to interject, but I didn't want to interrupt the strategist that was providing testimony, but this is Commissioner Layden. I haven't left, but I've been listening very intently. Appreciate all the detailed comments from the citizens.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate you finding a way to stay in this hearing. Mr. Berg, please do give us your name for the record and tell us where you're from.
My name's Scott Berg, last name B-E-R-G, and I live in Roxborough Park. I've been here about eight years. We all love that song we used to listen to all the time, "Save Paradise." Put up a parking lot. You know, it's, well, here it is, you know? But first of all, I just wanted to say, just listening to what you all presented here tonight, I'm so proud of our Roxborough family, and I just, I'm humbled to be part of this community with you guys, so just wanted to say that. You know, we moved here, we bought a house really sight unseen because of the surroundings and just the iconic area. We just never saw anything like it and to imagine living here and it being like it is was everything we wanted to. This is, this is all we wanted. What was it? Do-Us-Out? Was that the? You know, I just didn't see anything more for us than what we could do here together as a family and a neighborhood. This business plan scares the crap out of me, and not to say that you all don't know your business, but I mean, as it stands, just to be a Nordic spa and not have anything else, I don't know where this clientele's coming from that's going to pay all this stuff up, so I'm scared to death that the failure of it leaves, what's, the scars in the wake. And I just can't imagine what that would be. I'd hate that. And now, you know, more and more, I'm hearing eminent domain, and wow, to not have the oversight of what you all have brought to us to look after us as a community is unconscionable. Commissioner Teal, you, when you were talking about the, one of the previous issues with the trail community, you brought up a comment about you loved, it really resonated with me, you loved that it, not only the community was there, but it had, it buffered, and it had, it protected that community. And I, it really resonated, I'm just really proud that you had said that. I really, it meant a lot to me. This is not buffered. This is drummed right down in the middle of everyone's throats, and for our beloved neighbors that live off of the road up there, the Cardell Homes and everything else, oh my God, that is, it's brutal, just absolutely brutal, but I just, I don't like, I just don't like being treated like that. It just, I don't think it's a good idea. It's threatening our wildlife, threatening our precious landscape, the homeowners up in that area, but all of us homeowners. You know, when my next-door neighbors...
Mr. Berg, I do have to ask you to wrap it up, please.
You know what? Just say no.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Jane Jones. Jane Jo, there you go, ma'am. Ma'am, please come forward. Give us your name, tell us where you're from.
It's Tane Jones, T-A-N-E.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm. I live in Roxborough Park, and my husband and I have lived there for about two and a half years. Along with the majority of the people in this room, I strongly oppose the application of a metro district and ask that you take into consideration all of the comments of those that have come before me and deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Bob Jones. Sir, please give us your name and tell us where you're from.
I'm the easy name of the neighborhood, Bob Jones, J-O-N-E-S. I just have a couple of quick points. The first one is when I look at the list of approval criteria, number two, existing services inadequate for present and projected needs. This is premature. We don't know what the projected needs are because we don't know what their plan is. They have a concept of a plan. It might be homes, it might be a spa, it might be something else tomorrow, but we don't know what that is. So this is premature, and I feel like they should solve the zoning issue first and then have a plan and then determine whether those needs can be met. Second point I would like to make, the planning commission, excuse me, planning commission voted against this, five to one. We've heard from Pomeroy that the issues have been resolved, but we haven't heard from the planning commission that those issues have been resolved, so we just have to take Pomeroy's hand-waving that their objections have been resolved. Similarly, with the Rocks Water Board, they denied the request, but again, they have not revoted based on an amended submission. All we have is Pomeroy saying, "We've changed what we're doing. It's going to be fine." So for those reasons, I strongly urge that you deny this request for the metro district at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Sharon Beal.
Hi, my name's Bridget Epp, E-P-P. I'm speaking on behalf for Sharon Beal, who is not here. She had to leave. She just wanted to say, please deny this request.
Ma'am, I apologize. You know, everybody, some people have had to step out. I appreciate, we want to hear from everybody, but our processes, folks that are here. Please let Ms. Beal know, she will have an opportunity for a remote comment.
She's listening.
Okay, if she's listening, we're going to give her an opportunity, but thank you. That's been a good neighbor, but we must adhere to our processes. Pavi Rambo. Man, I think that's what it says. Not seen. Roberta Passer.
Ma'am, I'm sure you're going to tell me it's Passer, but that's okay because I'll ask you to state your name and tell us where you're from.
My name is Roberta Passer, P-A-S-E-R. Good evening, commissioners. We're all getting really tired, but I have been a resident of Roxborough Park for 10 years now. I'm a Colorado native. I won't tell you how old I am, so I think I'm at the end of the list, pretty much. What I see in here today, to oppose the proposed, oppose the proposed metro district, I knew I was going to spell that, get that wrong. "These added costs will overly burden homeowners without providing much benefit to them because the community already has the services and infrastructure metro districts are meant to provide." The Colorado.gov website states, "Special districts are created to fill the gaps that may exist in the services counties provide and the services the residents may desire. These are generally for large tracts of rural land where a developer is building hundreds or thousands of homes and providing schools, community centers, fire service, and recreational amenities." As we've already talked about, this development, however, will consist of either a single-business commercial spa or just 31 residential units, and is in a community which already has all of the necessary amenities like the water, sanitation, and fire services. It is also within one mile of two large metro districts, which provide schools and numerous recreational facilities the residents can use if desired, thanks to the open space funding grants. So what will this metro district do? It will impose unnecessary taxes and put an unfair burden on homeowners by increasing their tax bill. Metro districts have come under increased scrutiny from the Colorado Legislature because homeowners consistently complain about the increased tax burden these mill levies impose without homeowner representation on the district's board. With the 36% rise in property values in Douglas County over the last two years and the rise in mill levies, homeowners are struggling financially to keep their homes. The 2,300 metro districts in Colorado hold more than $1 trillion in debt, while the state of Colorado only holds $37 billion of total debt. As reported by the Denver Post, "Giving developers taxing and bonding authority was a bad idea. City and county officials have lost control of billions of taxpayer dollars." Commissioner Layden, you have stated that you have been working to decrease our tax burden and keep Douglas County fiscally conservative, including annual historic mill levy reductions, and that your focus is doing the most good for the greater number. Commissioner Teal, you have stated providing tax relief to our residents is our number-one consideration, and Commissioner Thomas, you have stated, "I'm grateful on behalf of residential property owners in Douglas County that Assessor Damish and his team are providing real property tax relief." I urge you not to lose control of tax dollars, not to give taxing and bonding authority over the foreign-based company, and to continue to support the conservative fiscal values of Douglas County voters. Be respectful of the will of the people who believe in limited taxation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments. Ryan Mullin. Ryan Mullin, please. Not heard. Jim Griffith, please.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak, and I concur with the dominant theme... theme of the residence. My wife and I moved here from Hawaii 10 years ago and when my wife was house hunting and she came and saw the arrowheads, she called me up and said, "This is where we're going to live." We've never regretted, regretted it. Now, most of the points that I wanted to cover have already been, um, covered by previous, um, individuals and I won't burden you with repeating them. But I did want to talk about crime. Because of the guard gate that we have out in the front, our community has relatively little crime, but we're not immune. A couple of years ago, we had, uh, our mailboxes vandalized repeatedly, presumably from somebody outside of the neighborhood. Now, I fear that a daily influx of some question mark number of people, between 500 a day, 250,000 a year, I don't know, but I, I worry about the burden those number of people will put on the vetting system that the guard gates, uh, the guard at the gates do. And we only have a single entry point. Additionally, there's going to be no control of where the individuals who are visiting the spa go after they leave the spa. They can wander around at their leisure, um, at nine o'clock at night when the spa closes, um, scoping out houses or doing whatever they want to. So I am concerned about the potential for increase in, in crime. The, um, my background is in healthcare and so all of this stuff is, is foreign to me. But I want to leave you with a visual. Placing the spa in the middle of the Arrowhead Golf Course in our community is about as reasonable as putting a hot dog stand in the middle of an operating room. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Jennifer Powell, please. Jennifer Powell. All right, not heard. Sir, please come forward, give us your name for the record and tell us where you're from.
Yeah, my name is Carrie Clark. I'm from Parker, Colorado. I'm here primarily on behalf of Fred and Martha who acquired this property 26 years ago. I won't have everybody who's been here 26 years stand up, but they've owned that property, excuse me, for 26 years. They asked me as a real estate broker, excuse me, it's been a long time, uh, to market the property for them. We had a tremendous influx of offers, people wanting to build as many homes as possible on the west side of the golf course. It's a great area, a great demand for residential, um, and we certainly considered it. But Fred and Martha were very adamant about protecting the views of the rocks. And so we kept looking for people. We were fortunate enough to have, uh, the Pomeroy Group come in and they didn't want to put houses there, they wanted to build a spa, which I won't go into the details, but it's a great use for the community, it increases values, a lot of benefits. The main benefit for Fred and Martha was it saved the views of the rocks. And some of you with "save our rocks" probably know me pretty well because I kept getting calls of, "Please have Fred and Martha go away and don't sell their property." I would urge you to consider, this is really for, more for people, you guys have done this a million times and I've lost a blade of hair every time I've sat through one of these, so I've, I've seen a few of them. I would urge people to support this, and just so I can say I told you so, support the spa because it will save the rocks, it'll save the view of the rocks. You mentioned 34 houses on the west side, I think it'd probably be closer to 100. It's, uh, it's owned for 94. Um, the amount of water needed can be multiplied by, uh, attached housing, types of housing, this would be, uh, probably empty nesters, so there's not as many bathrooms, not as much need for water, so you can really expand the number of units you can do. And I would just say, it's not a matter of if something will be done, it's which thing will be done. You'll either fill, and for those of you who don't know, that west side goes, there's a, a path going through there for the golf course because it cuts the golf course in half if they don't have access. There's an access agreement, but that would be moved to allow the construction of the, I would guess, 80 or 90 single-family homes. So it's not a, a question of nothing or something, it's a question of what, if anything. Uh, as I say, I think you would find the, the spa a much better option, leaves the open side on the west, probably be improved because then it's, there's no reason to hold it back on and, and actually make it look like something other than a giant weed patch. Uh, so in, in summary, I guess I would just tell you that Fred and Martha certainly support the spa and would do anything they can to help it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Um, okay, that concludes, uh, the list that I had going. Commissioner, would you support, uh, taking a break before we continue with, uh, public testimony?
I would.
And Commissioner Layden, I hope you don't object to a break at this time. That does not sound like an objection, so folks, let's take 10 minutes and be back in here.
Folks, let's come back to Twitter. All right, let's come back into session. I went through, I completed the signup list. Is there anyone who has not yet spoken on this matter? Who would like to deliver public testimony at this time? I am seeing no hands in the room. Troy, is there anyone joining us online? Who would like to give remote testimony on this matter?
Yes, sir, I will unmute the first person. That will be James Hogan. Kim, you're unmuted, go ahead. Yes, sir, we can.
And James, please start by giving us your name and tell us where you're from.
Sure, it's James H O G A N. And I am from Roxborough Park. I live kind of adjacent, but down the way from the Sundown Trail. And I don't have, you know, I think everybody, all my neighbors have done a fantastic job of building a very strong case about why this spa is not a good fit for this community. So I wanted to just talk about why I moved here. So I have lived in Colorado all my life, I'm a native. And I, you know, my kids and my wife and I started out in Roxborough Village. We lived there for about four years and then we moved to Highlands Ranch and lived in Highlands Ranch for 26 years. And the reason for moving to Highlands Ranch is because of all the facilities, the amenities, and all the things that you get in that kind of community. And that, that was really good for our life at that point in time. Now we're getting older and we're at the point where we want to retire. And this is our house that we bought that we're going to live in for the rest of our lives. And we bought it here because it was quiet. There's no, you know, not a lot of light out here, it's dark, there's tons of animals, almost every single animal you could possibly find except for elk. And, and it's a quiet community and the people are just great. So having a spa in here, bringing all the traffic would just create lots more noise. I mean, Arrowhead Golf Course is already noisy and there's a lot of buses and bus traffic and stuff that are coming up the Sundown Trail Street. And if you bring in this spa, you're talking about bringing in even way more noise and traffic, especially if it's going to break it into four lanes of traffic going back and forth. If you've been in this community, you can tell that that, that is a wide road for a very small community. It's like building a highway in the middle of the mountains, like in a, you know, very small valley of the mountains. So I, I urge you to reject this bid to build this facility. It's not right for this community and it doesn't work in this environment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate your comments. Troy, is there someone, anyone else could give remote testimony?
Yes, sir, I have several. Next one will be Noel Morrill. If I pronounce that incorrectly, please forgive me.
That's right, no, you got it right, wow, good for you. This is Noel, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, please give us your full name for the record and tell us where you're from.
It's Noel Morrill, M O R R I L L. And I live in Roxborough Park. And I'm not going to repeat what everybody said, I can just say, I concur with what all of my neighbors have said about the, what a bad idea this whole thing is. It's, it's just amazing to me that, that it would even be considered, considering the community and the, and the nature of the area we live in. And I'll leave it at that, except for one parting shot. I, I find it really interesting that the majority, if not all of the few people that came to speak on Palmroy's behalf are from Sterling Ranch. Sterling Ranch currently has a ballot on Douglas County for, for school money. And yet this is something that they want to pay extra for. I mean, this would impact their property taxes as well. But I just think it's really ironic that Sterling Ranch of all places is, is the one that are, that are their big supporters. That's all, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate your comments. Troy, anyone else for remote testimony?
Yes, sir. Dave Belcher will be next. Dave, you're unmuted, go ahead. Dave Belcher, you're unmuted. Okay, we will come back to Mr. Belcher and try again at the end.
Thank you, Troy.
Let's see, I'm trying to mute him, hang on. Having some difficulty muting. Okay, next we'll go on to Joanna, Joanna Jones. You are unmuted.
Hang on just a moment. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, please try to probably turn down volume on your device, please, we're getting an echo.
Hang on just a moment, sir, I'm having a hard time getting Mr. Belcher muted for some reason, having a technical difficulty. Okay, we'll try Joanna again and hopefully it won't echo.
Okay, is it better now?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Please give us your name for the record and tell us where you're from.
My name's Joanna Jones, J O N E S. And my address is 6450 Willow Broome Trail.
Please continue, ma'am.
So I understand this is not about the Nordic Spa or the currently allowed residential use. We're only talking about the metro district, so I won't tell you I support the Nordic Spa. I also want to express support for the metro district application. I'm a resident in Rocks Park and I believe in creating enhancements and better infrastructure for all of our residents. So for efficient infrastructure financing, a metro district provides a reliable and dedicated financing mechanism to fund necessary infrastructure such as roads, utilities, and public amenities without placing the burden on existing taxpayers. I don't have to pay for these roads and neither do any existing residents. Enhanced community services, so metro districts often allow for the development and maintenance of enhanced community services such as parks, recreation centers, and other public amenities, which can improve the overall quality of life for residents. And again, we all benefit from better community services. Regarding the Douglas County process and criteria, this metro district application has undergone a thorough review by the staff and has been carefully evaluated by Douglas County. I believe it meets all of the county's approval criteria and I strongly encourage your support for this application. Please support this application before you today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, we do appreciate your comments. Troy, is there anyone else to give remote testimony?
Yes, sir, I have a few. Eric Klemmer has now joined us online. Eric, you're unmuted, go ahead. Yes, sir.
I would just like to say before I start that I was here earlier today, I just had to leave due to some family things. My name is Eric Klemmer, Klemmer is K L E M M E R. And I'm a Castle Pines residence. I'm here though today reading a statement for Fred and Martha, who are the previous owners of the Homestead parcel. Hello, I am Fred and my wife Martha, and I have owned the Homestead parcel for many years. We were schoolteachers who bought this site to create a retirement plan. We fully support the metro district application. I have asked someone else to read the statement. My health, blood, my health, blood pressure, and life dramatically improved once I sold this site. And I don't want to deal with the additional stress, but I believe it is important to share our thoughts. During our time owning the property, we faced significant challenges working with the Roxborough Foundation, particularly around the site's development. Despite the site's existing planned development document permitting up to 180 residential units, the foundation consistently opposed any development on the site. Because of this knowledge and anticipated future development, we have paid for the water tap for over 20 years, based on the allowances, allowances in the existing PD planning document. We decided to sell the property due to the burden of the cost and the issues with the foundation. When we decided to sell the property, our priority was finding the right developer who would respect the natural surroundings and was willing to work with adjacent entities. We believe that Palmroy is that developer. Their proposed use of the land is much less intensive, protects rocks, and shares the amenities with all instead of a few lucky homeowners. Regardless of the establishment of the metro district is a critical first step, this district will allow for funding of the necessary infrastructure in the area. Even if this site is developed for residential purposes, a similar process would be required. We urge the commissioners to support the metro district and the Palmroy development plan. It's the right approach for the site and will ensure the area is developed in a way that balances growth and respects the environment and surrounding community. Thank you to Palmroy, thank you to the commissioners, and this is from Fred and Martha, the previous owners. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate you sharing that. Troy, do we have any further remote testimony?
Yes, sir, Commissioner, I have Sharon Beal. Sharon, you're unmuted, go ahead.
Good evening. Well, that's quite a set of comments to be following. I am Sharon Bell, B E H L. My husband and I live on Decatur Ridge Drive, which is right off of Sundown. And frankly, our perspective is that it's, it is the wrong thing for this community, for the spa to be in and for the metro district to form. We've been heartbroken at some of the dealings of Palmroy. Our experience is not that they operate in integrity. Want to echo Scott from early on, his comments when he said, "Just say no." Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate your comments. Troy, is there anyone else for remote testimony?
Yes, sir, it looks like David Belcher just came back in, so we'll go ahead and try. Sir, you're unmuted, go ahead. And my apologies, we still do not have sound for him. Okay, that would conclude my list, apart from Mr. Belcher.
All right, thank you, Troy. With that, I'm going to close public testimony on this matter and open it back up to the applicant to respond to any public testimony that has been heard this afternoon and to this evening.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to address and provide a rebuttal. I do want to start by acknowledging and almost take a step back that, I think sometimes in these hearings, there becomes a situation where it becomes about everything but what is in front of the respective body. We are here today only for a metro district application and we will refocus back on the approval criteria. I want to say as respectfully as I can, as a 30-year land use professional that practices in this area all the time, we are in complete and total conformance with the approval criteria for this site. We are going through a land use process and we could not have been more transparent. What we laid out and the reason we gave the background of our presentation is because we said, "You are going to hear the following things. The majority of the comment will be about the Nordic Spa. We want to underscore and respect and honor everything that has been said. The Nordic Spa is not allowed today. It is not allowed." We showed two development scenarios where we said residential units, residential is allowed, it's in the existing PD. Those units would still have to go through a site planning process. So, so many comments about it's a conceptual. This isn't a site plan hearing. We go through a site plan process and plan each one of those. But we fully respect and honor what we just heard was a four-hour preview of an amendment, a PD amendment to see if the Nordic Spa is allowed. I get it, there were great comments, there were great arguments, there was true passion. People talked about why they moved here, why they want to see it. Is this right? Does it impact the wildlife differently? That is what a PD hearing is all about, a planned development. We would be asking for a change in use. What we are here to focus on is can we have a metro district to provide services? What got lost in all of this discussion is the limits on what is before you of the approval criteria. Within the proposed boundaries, we are talking about these first four, the need for services on our site. There are no services on our site. There is no infrastructure. Megan will go through the approval criteria. I just want to bring us back, I want to go because there was so much interest in Area Nine, Approval Criteria Nine. District will be in the best interests of the area to be served. Our boundaries are the area to be served. That is the district boundary. It is in the best interests unequivocally of this area to get infrastructure, to get services, to get water, to get all of that. You heard repeatedly from the Roxborough Foundation, even if there is a standard in there, a trigger, as we call it in the parlance of engineering, that triggers a roadway improvement, we won't grant it. We won't grant it, we will not work with this property. We are not members of the foundation, Fred and Martha, they're sales, because we were told we will never be allowed to be members of this organization. Never, period. That is the first thing we said. We didn't sue the county, we didn't sue the Roxborough Foundation until they came before you and said, "We will never orphan a property, we will provide access to all these properties except for our site." Literally, everyone correctly described our site as the center of the community. Are we literally making an argument that the center of our community doesn't deserve service, doesn't deserve sewer, doesn't deserve water lines, and doesn't deserve a roadway? If it were a residential, if it were an individual development, residential development, the use allowed today, we get to build a road, we get to build water service. That is what we are asking for. So I am so sorry, it feels disrespectful to go to that process. We are not trying to be that. I am a native, I know these rocks, I know these areas, I know this site as well as anybody. I have profound respect. And as tempted as we are, we are not going to debate the merits of a Nordic Spa application. That's not before you today. We can talk about traffic, air quality, all of those things, the numbers that were just thrown out. What we are asking for is a metro district to provide infrastructure and the ability to find, finance that and pay that back. So I just want to state there again, I just want to respectfully allow the community to understand, we're not pushing back about that, we are following the process. This isn't an end around. We admitted, gave our whole presentation, residential allowed, Nordic Spa has to go through a change. We will go through that change with everybody in this room, you all get to make that decision. What we are asking is you make the decision on the metro district, those easements, those utilities, not the Roxborough Foundation. They don't get a control of this site. You have this wonderful, wonderful process where we get to come and ask you, you hear from all parties about, "Do we deserve roadways? Do we deserve service? And do we deserve water lines?" That's the process, the application we have presented. I'm going to transition here to Megan for just a moment, she's going to walk through the approval criteria and then I'll come back and close. There's a number of issues that I want to address and I will say to the Chair and the Commissioners, we will answer any specific question, so many of the comments were about the Nordic Spa. And that's not, I'm happy to go through them, I'm happy to give our view on that, but that is not what is before you today. So I'll take your, I'll defer, of course, to all of you, if you ask us questions, we will answer those. Great, Megan, go ahead. Would you like to switch, no, stay there, stay there.
I'll attempt not to be duplicative either, but thanks, Marcus, for bringing us back to the criteria. As Marcus mentioned, really this is, is for the question tonight, what we need to focus on or ask that you respectfully focus on. The reality, as Marcus mentioned, is there's an existing need for the services and infrastructure that the district will provide today. And there is no other existing entity that is willing or able to finance and construct the infrastructure that's proposed within the boundaries of these districts and that is, this district, to serve the property. Without a metropolitan district, there's no one else that will do it, the entities that were mentioned, the county, the county's not going to build the infrastructure internal to, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that is internal to this development. The Roxborough Foundation is not either. Roxborough Water and Sanitation District is not going to. So the, the metro district is the mechanism by which to get this infrastructure built relative to the future need and services of the district, although the district is not a water and sewer provider, the district will have perpetual responsibility and again as a mechanism to provide ongoing services, in particular relative to park and recreation, landscape maintenance, that again, other entities are not able or willing to provide. So we're talking about an imminent infrastructure need and we're talking about a future provision of services for those purposes. Let's see, Marcus touched on criteria number nine. Again, when we're talking about best interest, we're talking about within the boundaries of the district. And, and again, we understand that that doesn't feel comfortable to the vast majority of those that testified tonight, but it is the criteria of the statute that what does this area need to get developed? It needs public infrastructure extension so that it can have these public services within its boundaries. And another thing I wanted to address is, you know, we heard a lot about, and we addressed in our initial presentation, the challenges, right, the concerns, in particular relative to ingress egress, to fire mitigation. Those are things that the district can assist with without putting additional burden on the surrounding areas. The burden, the additional taxation will be within those boundaries. So there is not taxation outside of these 35 acres. There are not, you know, the improvement fee revenues generated outside of these boundaries. It is so this area with its development can pay its own way through imposing taxes, financing and constructing this infrastructure that can help solve a lot of, a lot of the challenges that were raised today. Let's see, the other thing I wanted to address, just relative to what this district will provide, it's a transparent local government mechanism, right? You guys are abundantly familiar with the audit laws, the budget laws, the election laws, the construction laws, the districts. I know we had some conversation and comments about, you know, additional obligations that have been imposed by the state legislature on some of those transparency. The district has to include recorded disclosures, website requirements, mailings of what's going on. The district will be required to do all of those things. So it will, from the district's perspective, be an open book about what it's doing, what it's spending money on, you know, through its life. And so I think that's an important aspect, too. I am also going to, because there were some questions about feasibility of the finance plan, and I think that goes to some of the questions in the approval criteria as well. I'm actually going to, if it's okay, call up Shelby Noble, who's with Piper Sandler, who prepared the finance plans that are in the service plan, and just have her give a real brief statement as to the feasibility of these plans and address just a couple of the concerns that were raised, if that's acceptable.
Please. And please do give your name, give your credentials.
Good evening, my name is Shelby Noble, I'm with Piper Sandler and, do you need my address for that? I'm a bond underwriter, but I'm at 1144 15th Street, Denver, Colorado.
Thank you, ma'am, please proceed.
Great. So as mentioned, I did produce the financing plans for the service plan. Included in both of those are both a residential and a Nordic Spa plan. In those, we do assume that there are 50 mils that would be levied for debt service. Speaking just to the residential plan, we do use assumptions that are provided based on development that could occur. That is based on absorption paces, values of homes, what that value would be, inflation projections, things like that. When we actually go to issue bonds, we must receive a tax exempt opinion from a bond council firm, that is a licensed firm within the state of Colorado. In order for them to provide us with a tax exempt opinion, we must prove feasibility. So when we're going out to issue bonds, we will get a third-party market study that says, "Yes, we do believe that these projections are in line with market expectations." So if for some reason we needed, you know, if we were only building 31 homes in this development, that is what we would get this third-party market study to prove, we would also use valuations in that market study. These bonds are sold to These bonds are sold to municipal investment funds that are institutional investors and must be bought in $500,000 denominations. That requires them to be sophisticated investors. They know what they are buying, they know the degree of risk that is involved, and that passes on to the investor, not the resident. Those, we are capped at our mill levy, we cannot impose any more than that. If the development is slower or provides less revenues, that is a risk of the investor, not the homeowner. And not for any other homeowners within the Roxborough Foundation. It's just the boundaries of the district, because it is paying for its own development services and infrastructure that is in place there. The same is true for if there were to be a different type of development, if there were to be sales tax, things like that, that still is a risk of the investor, not the user or the ultimate owner. They do pay property taxes, but they, if, if the development does not occur as planned, it is still a risk of the investor, not the end user. So in short, all of these would need to be proven for feasibility to prove that these could be paid within a 30-year time period, which is what was projected in our financing plans here. Any questions on how we do that process?
Any questions from the board pertaining to the opinion of Piper Sandler?
I have none. Thank you for that explanation.
And I have none.
I'm good to go, too. Applicant may continue.
I think just a few things to finish up, and again, we'll answer any questions that you have. I do want to draw attention to the story that I think the Roxborough Foundation and their board, they had submitted their letter, and they read through that testimony today with their 10 speakers. It was very well done and passionate, but I want to talk specifically about what they deliberated on. They talked about when Roxborough Park, this community was first built, they had a metro district, because there were no infrastructure, there were no roads, there was nothing there, and it went away once services were provided. We are talking about the same thing. We have absolutely no infrastructure. What we are missing here, and what the public was saying, is we have roads around it, we love our neighborhood. No, it's within the proposed boundaries. It's within our parcel. We are the same situation. We don't have services, we don't have infrastructure. Once those services are provided, our district will go away as well. In the future, it will go away, just as the story was sold. I also want to be sure and underscore, because I think the fear of eminent domain. Eminent domain does not change zoning, does not allow uses, does not allow buildings, any of those things. We follow the process. This takes us through a PD amendment. Only there will there be a decision if a Nordic spa is allowed, right? We could never have a hotel, we would never do that. That's why, again, we leaned in and said, "We are going to show you, we want to put the entire West Side in a conservation easement." Period. We agree. It should be protected for all. We will do that in that application, or we will do a residential. Again, ladies and gentlemen, I want to say to the Chair and Commissioners, we are trying to be as transparent and non-threatening as possible. We laid out what everyone was going to say. You are going to hear about fire mitigation, insurance rates, fire, all of those things are great. If we collaborate with the Roxborough Foundation, we can address those issues. If they don't want to collaborate with us, that can't happen. But why would we not try to solve those issues that the community has identified? I will end with transparency. We had an open house this last week. We had a wonderful turnout. We had 35 members. We asked Mr. Lynch to share it with the entire 1,000-member community, to come there and learn about this. We had booths set up about the two scenarios and the metro district. Had 35 people there. We are being transparent throughout this entire process, going through that and doing it. So I think I'll wrap up there. I do want to just be sure, there was at least eight speakers that spoke about the comprehensive plan. I just want to bring you back. The board may approve the service plan if evidence is presented sufficient to demonstrate substantial compliance with the Douglas County Comprehensive Master Plan. This is for an allowed use. It is for residential. It is the same use as the rest of the community. We are proposing a metro district with a use that is completely compliant with the comprehensive plan. And before a Nordic spa could be allowed, we would have to go through a land use process and prove that that change is in substantial compliance with the county master plan. So that process is forthcoming. So with all of that, I will conclude and answer any questions that you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant from the board?
You know, I don't have any questions for the applicant, but I do have some comments. I'll reserve those following your questions.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
I had written several questions, but Mr. Pockner, when you just went through and brought us back to the point that where we are, we are considering these criteria up here. It's not about a Nordic spa, it's not about a lot of other things. It is, does your 35 acres that you have brought before us need these things? Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
I have no other questions.
So just to hearken back to an earlier map, I mean, there is current residential zoning on this property, correct?
There is. It is parcels 12 and 14 of the original PD to allow for residential development at a higher density than we are planning.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to ask staff to check that statement by the applicant. No offense, applicant, but staff, can we verify that that is indeed the current residential zoning allowed on this piece of land?
This is Lauren Pulver with staff. That's correct. The parcels in this project are currently zoned for residential use.
I think that might be the key fact for me, and so, thank you. Any further questions for the applicant? Turning it back to staff, any further questions from the board for staff?
I have no more questions.
I have none.
All right. Okay. In that case, board deliberation, and board, how would we like to, how would we like to proceed with this application?
So as I was listening-
Well, I have a- Go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Commissioner Layden will get to you in a second, okay?
As I was listening to all the speakers, I've got all sorts of notes written down here, and I made a separate list of things that I thought would be appropriate for the criteria that were up on the board. And I heard people, there was a really smart woman who came up and talked about her geology background and the rocks, and that the land was, was impervious, that, that once it's built, anything is built in there. There's going to be drainage problems. And I thought, so that is something that a metro district would be needed to address, is a stormwater plan. I also heard people talking over and over about the need for roads for evacuation if there was a fire. And part of this plan, this isn't the exact map, I was trying to find the map in here, but we showed them, you showed a map of roads that you would be willing to build that would increase the ability for neighbors in the Roxborough area for evacuation. And I thought, that is something that a metro district would fund. So when I look at, number one, the need for services, there are no services in this parcel that we are talking about. And what you, the applicant is here doing, is asking for the ability to have a metro district developed so that you can borrow money from the woman who talked, from Piper Sandler? So you can sell bonds and you have, have money to build the infrastructure on this parcel. And when that is done, whatever use ends up being done, is who will be responsible for paying back those bond owners? There were people here who were saying it's going to increase our taxes, we'll be on the hook. I think we heard that that is not the case. You, the people who live in Roxborough Park now will not be responsible for paying back these bonds for this metro district if it's approved. The financial ability to discharge the proposed indebtedness. I think we heard from the speaker from Sandler, Piper, again, to address that topic. Capable of economical and sufficient service within the proposed boundaries. Already zoned for homes, and those homes would pay back those bonds. Adequate service is not or will not be available. It's not available right now. That's why we need the, that's why they are asking for a metro district so they can provide these services. A compatible facility and service standards. There are none, and that's what the metro district will build up to. Substantial compliance with the Douglas County Comprehensive Master Plan. It's already zoned as a planned development and meets that plan that was approved many years ago by another Board of Commissioners. Compliance with adopted water quality plan. We heard there's a will-serv letter from Roxborough Park, Roxborough Water, but there's no infrastructure. So this metro district is needed to build the infrastructure to provide this water. And the final one, the district will be in the best interest of the area to be served. This, this is not talking about the entire Roxborough Park neighborhood. I believe that this number nine criteria only addresses those interested people who live or will be in that 35 acres. And so it's in their best interest to get this service, this metro district approved, so we can, they can get some services in there, they can get some infrastructure there. And so I believe, even though I've listened to all of you, I wrote down notes, a lot of you talked about something that will be considered probably at another hearing. This is about the metro district, and I believe that all nine of those criteria have been met.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Layden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, if I wasn't the, the father of a young six-year-old and a teenager that's still at home, I would, I would be with you in person. But I have been listening intently, and I just want to thank everyone that's there and everybody that's online, because, you know, after six years of being a county commissioner and several years as a planning commissioner, I marvel at how brilliant, how expert our citizens are. They show a prepared, organized, respect the rules, provide really compelling arguments. And I want to be very transparent. You know, my late father bought his dream home in Roxborough. I'm a fifth-generation Coloradan, he's a fourth, or was a fourth, and passed away during COVID, not of COVID, but of, of a massive heart attack. And I was in my mother's home when we, we had to address that issue. And I will tell you, on a personal level, I deeply, deeply care about this community, about this neighborhood, the historic nature of everything that's surrounding this important area, all the wildlife. I mean, the number of deer you see on an average day, just, it looks like a Disney movie. So I, I get it. Like I said, our property is, our family's invested there. And I appreciate, you know, really, all of, all of the community rallying around my mom, who's, who's a widow, and loves her, her home, just like all of you. What I struggle with is, and first and foremost, let me thank Commissioner Thomas for walking through the legal approval criteria. I think that's always an important exercise. And I, I agree with her comments. Unfortunately, what we just went through and listened to was basically a PD hearing or a site plan hearing, and that's not why we were here tonight. We were here to, to talk about a service plan. So as much as I appreciate neighborhood organization, whoever organized all of you to come tonight, it's, it's so important that accurate information is disseminated about the nature of what we're doing, so that you can tailor, tailor your comments to what is actually going on, and we can also save you, save you the time and heartache of sitting through something that is perhaps premature. But, I mean, just going back to the legal approval criteria, I, I am looking at all of those, again, I agree with Commissioner Thomas. And I think about the sellers who were there for 26 years, almost longer than anybody that I, I heard from this evening, that had a private property right and have every right to sell their property. And we have a property owner now that rightfully acquired title to this property. We, we see really important parcels all the time, and if a neighborhood wants it for open space or preservation for historic purposes, they buy it. That did not occur here. That doesn't mean it couldn't occur in the future, but that's not what we're dealing with. This is somebody else's property. And if somebody told my late father that they were going to put a circle around his house and not let him out, I'd have a real problem with that, and I think each of you would as well. These folks have a right to have access to the property that they have invested in. But I will tell you, again, as somebody who's deeply passionate about this county and this neighborhood, I am always very cognizant of noise, fire danger, wildlife access, preservation of historic artifacts. There will be, you know, no moment where I'm not closely focused on those important issues in the future. And I really appreciate Mr. Pockner being transparent with you all, and for the sellers sharing the fact that, look, this could have been 94 units, very high-intensity usage, and this is an alternative potential use, but that, you know, we're, we're not discussing that tonight. The transparency I appreciate is that Mr. Pockner's not saying, hey, we're gonna, this is going to be residential, and, you know, then, then do some sort of bait and switch down the road. I think he's been very clear, they're going to try to pursue a Nordic spa, and, you know, I think that's certainly something everybody's aware of, and they will have to go through that process in order to get any sort of approval. I don't know where that's going to end up, but they've got some very high hurdles to overcome to get there. What I do appreciate is when neighborhoods work with property owners, I've seen community benefit agreements where a developer works with foundations and HOAs to ensure that the concerns and the needs of a community, of a special community, are addressed. And I really would invite the stakeholders, all of the stakeholders, to engage in conversation before we hear this again, so that there's less community unrest in the future. But I, you know, we're, we're not here to talk about that. I'll just say that I do, once again, I do agree with the analysis that Commissioner Thomas provided, and I would be in support of a motion to approve the service plan.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I concur with the analysis from Commissioner Thomas. The reality is, folks, those first 10 comments we heard from the leadership of the foundation tied our hands. There is no choice here for us, because the, the foundation basically said, there, there's no possibility. Therefore, the owner is exercising their rights to form a metro district in order to provide the services required to exercise the property rights they have right now. Because their property rights right now are equivalent to every one of yours, to mine in Crystal, in Crystal Valley here in Cals Rock, Commissioner Thomas's and Commissioner Layden's in their homes. And so, you know, to the leadership of the foundation, you, you made the decision for us by, by really outlining your comments. So I'm inclined to support the application. I, I think the case has been made that there are no adequate services. There is a need of services in this piece of property. And then the district will be in the best interests of the area to be served? Absolutely. Because we've heard from the foundation that there are no services to be provided by the foundation. I wish I had a reason to have a different conclusion, quite frankly, because, guys, you're, you're a great neighborhood. I mean, I've, I've been to your neighborhood many times. I, I visited the state park, I've visited Arrowhead. You have a great, great neighborhood. But the reality is, we do have a landowner that does have a right. The metro district service plan here is the mechanism for them, for them to exert their property rights. So I am in concurrence with Commissioner Thomas's excellent and very detailed analysis of the approval criteria, and therefore I put it to the board. What is the board's pleasure?
I do have one question of clarification. Our motion log asks for the number of conditions, and I did, I don't see any conditions on this, only the nine criteria. Am I missing something?
That's correct, Commissioner. There are no conditions of approval for this.
Fine. With that, then, I'm willing, I'm ready to make a motion to approve the Arrowhead, Colorado Metropolitan District Service Plan, because it does meet all of the 10 approval criteria as presented. Project File SV 2024-002.
And I'll second that motion.
All right. There is a motion and a second. Any need for further discussion?
I just want to clarify, is it 10 criteria or nine?
It's nine. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm getting them all mixed up from today.
So I'll, I'll continue my second with the nine criteria.
Thank you Commissioners. Further discussion? There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 And there are none opposed, and so the metro district service plan is approved. All right. Well, thank you everyone for staying with us for such a late evening. Our next land use meeting and public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 8th, 2024 at 2:30 PM, and we are adjourned.